Are what we're doing. And kind of just tell everybody, you know, what we're doing and we will be submitting everything as a full revision shortly. So we've been, you know, spending quite a bit of time going through some revisions, reducing our gross floor area, increasing setbacks where we can, trying to take everything that the board and the neighbors have been discussing. And I think we've made some, some great strides with, with a few less jogs in the house and getting everything to a much, you know, hopefully a better number for everybody. We were able to reduce, we're able to reduce our total gross floor area to nineteen ninety-nine, so just under two thousand square feet. We, except we did increase some setbacks. We are reducing some of the, the pyramid as well, and just really trying to go through everything. We've spent quite a bit of time going through, doing an analysis of properties throughout Redwood, starting all the way from Glover Street, kind of going all the way through, foiling lots of things. So I really think we'll have very close to a very good presentation and very good new full submission for everybody, but sort of wanted to give everybody, you know, just a little bit of update of where we are and that we will be ready for the next, the next hearing with everything.
Great, thank you. Did, do you have anything to show us or is that?
Um.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I'm happy to show you sort of where we are, just with, from the survey, we kind of lessened some of the jogs through the house with everything. Sort of general analysis of, you know, of our setbacks where we still have some jogs, but obviously we're getting everything for, most things are going to be, get us to well over the twenty feet, which I know, trying to increase that. And then in terms of exterior elevation. Let's see. We don't have to go through all the details because I know they're not formally submitted, but just sort of trying to get everything a little bit more cohesive, a little less jogs, still have some, but, you know, more in keeping with a few of the other new, more modern homes that have been going up on Redwood. I know the street facades, obviously a little bit more interest than the, the water side to everybody. And then, like I said, kind of going through some analysis off of Glover Street, coming down with getting some, this was from GIS, some averages, we have some additional foil items as well. And then sort of going through, looking at aerials and do, we have a, a full comprehensive analysis of all the neighboring properties, going through just to kind of show what we've been doing and what we're basing everything on. So that's, that's really the main, the main items. I just sort of wanted to give an overview and an update and, you know, if there's anything that, you know, the board or anybody wanted to add, certainly, you know, happy to discuss, but I know you have a full agenda and just wanted to let everybody know that we are working diligently and we'll have that to everybody very short, very soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Damon out there in space? Okay, great.
Yes.
Do, do anybody, does anyone on the board have any questions?
You haven't.
Right. Yep, okay. Should we throw it up to the public too or not?
Continue the public hearing so the public can speak if they want to.
Okay. So, but the board has no questions at this point. Damon, you're okay?
I'm not waiting for the formal submission.
Right, okay. Damon, do you have anything?
Uh, that, the GFA was down roughly two thousand square feet, right? Is that what you had? Okay.
Correct.
One ninety-nine, correct, uh, one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine.
Correct.
So is there anyone from the public that wants to speak to forty-one Redwood Road, twenty-six Cove Road tonight? Even though it's not a formal application before us?
Dave Harvey, twenty-one Cove Road. Been here this floor.
Yes.
I had a question. There's been some redesign at the front. It's less steps in it. Just asked the design. In his diagram that shows the hatched portion versus the unhatched portion of each floor, the foundation, first floor, the second floor, and the roof deck. What percentage of that building is in that hatch area on each floor?
What, what percentage of? There's still, so from the hatched, I, I will have all the new numbers soon, but it was a little bit better than where we were before. It was still better than fifty percent was conforming. Where before, we were fairly close before. It's, it's close. I think one of the things is we could reduce another jog or, or create another jog or two, but then that, what that does is it sort of creates more broken up things. Maybe it helps with square footage for a little bit. So we've just been trying to balance that, but we are fairly close to that, that fifty percent. We're bet, you know, we're less than fifty percent encroachment, but it's still close to those areas. None of the roof deck goes in, I don't believe.
I'll ask the question again. What is the percentage of your hatched area?
I, I will have to get back to you.
I think that what he's saying is that the plan is in flux at the moment and there's, he doesn't have a number for us.
So he's showing three driveway entrances from Redwood Road, very close to the corner. Simple planning, planning one oh one. That's what you try not to do. So there's an existing driveway, which is an easement for the neighbor. And now they have two driveway cuts. One is directly on the corner. One is between the other two driveway cuts. I think that's, that's opening up this elevation to the approach tremendously. That's not sufficient.
We don't, we don't have a problem in cutting it back. I was playing with the site plan for that. We had the driveway like this previously. Without this section connecting through, that was our, our parking, which we had to maintain the five feet. This is exactly where it's been in the others. There's no problem. This seemed to make sense on the property, but I understand obviously with this existing driveway cut, if three is too many, that's not a problem.
Also, the existing septic system, if you're improving the property over fifty percent improvement, which you obviously are, the, the septic system that's currently on the property would also have to fulfill the new setback requirements, the new types of systems. I don't see that being addressed yet, or where that's going to go. Your own, your own septic system also, if any retaining is required, I don't know how you're going to get the retaining wall between the bleaching fields and the property line and still provide a three foot of the plumbing that's required before the retaining wall to the property line. So again, comprehensive site plan is, this doesn't seem to be there.
Okay, just, just real quick. So we, we had addressed, previously addressed the questions and the concerns about the retaining for the, our sanitary system and none is required for that. Everything we're doing, we are doing some subtle regrading. That's shown, but we don't need any retaining wall. So we're, we're fine with that.
I would, I would have to suggest that you look at that again because Delandro's engineering to exit the building into that septic system that's proposed is from an elevation that does not coincide with your first floor elevation. So again, just, you know, you should just look at it a little more carefully.
Happy to take a look at that. And honestly, for if this system is required to be upgraded based on the, the easement, that's something that, this is the easement that, that they have. So I guess somebody or health department will have to bring that up and that would have to be addressed with these neighbors. I'm, I was unaware of that, but that would be something that, between Delandro and the adjoining neighbors and health department will be requesting. To my knowledge, I don't believe, on a preliminary reviews, I don't believe health department has requested that, but I'm happy to look into that.
Well, yeah, you're gonna have to, we look at it. You can't have these systems, you can't have to not worry about it. I guess that's it. It's just they haven't redesigned them. As a neighbor, I want to know how much time for expected. Come back and, you know, review all this stuff.
Applications are during all time.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Sorry. Great, great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Carrie?
Nobody has their hand up.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think Val, you have some information or on a map that we'd like to submit as just more information about the Redwood area?
We, we could.
Just to put it in the record?
Well, just as a, a general study of any application, you have to look at the character of the neighborhood. And with this application, the designer, or I'm not sure if he's an architect, but the, he referenced Glover Street as the benchmark in terms of point of reference, where Redwood is an island. It was actually owned by a doctor in the eighteen hundreds. It was used for a single family dwelling. It was actually owned up until nineteen hundred. It sold and was subdivided, the map is here, from the nineteen hundreds. These parcels contain houses that range in size from six hundred square feet to now three thousand. The average house on Redwood was fourteen hundred square feet at the time of the subdivision map being created. And that in effect creates character of the neighborhood. In twenty sixteen, the village went through zoning change in terms of allowable square footage on these individual lots. Some are flood zone, some are X zone. My concern with this application in particular was setback from the road. The lots in certain sectors of this island are averaging a hundred and thirty feet, whereby future preference of, future construction could use that as precedent. Lesser setbacks in terms of a house saying, well, you gave this application consideration was to prevent future applications from following that suit. And that's a concern and the architect seems to be claiming he's making changes to that effect where we won't have precedent. But what's interesting to note is the applicant had said that this is a hardship because they're using R twenty zoning. Where in fact, if you look at the town zoning chart, R ten zoning, which is for a ten thousand square foot lot, is not any different with the exception of side yard setbacks. R ten zoning in the town still requires a thirty foot setback from the street. So don't think you can use that as a hardship in saying we're under a difficulty because R twenty in Sag Harbor and R ten in the town of Southampton are almost the equivalent. So as this continues to unfold and become smaller and better, it'll be more inconsistent with the character of Redwood, not the street over, which is Glover Street, where there are very large houses. So I think that's the importance of looking at the subdivision map for this sector of Sag Harbor, which was once disconnected. The bridge was not constructed until the early nineteen hundreds. Until then, you had to take a ferry boat to get to it and it was used as a residence with tennis courts. So long and short, that's all, character of the neighborhood.
Understood. Just, just for clarity and perhaps I misspoke, I, I was referencing that we started looking at things from Glover Street all through Redwood, not, not including Glover Street. Where that, that obviously I know is an entirely different, different feel and character. So understood and, and all noted.
One last comment with regard to referenced properties. There were references of past applications which were given consideration for variances. Out of respect for the applicant, we look at these things and study carefully, including fifteen Block Point Road, seven Cornell. Also, on the same street, we have another addition. Most of these houses were given a variance relief for steps, not the entire house, but rather features, landscape features in the front yard. That's a big distinction from giving something, an entire house, exception to the law. So I would point that out as well.
Great. So can you get a copy of this to Carrie for her to enter into the record? And then you can share it with the members and the applicant. Uh, great. You had a comment, great.
Peter Manchelli.
Yes, great.
Uh, Val. I personally took a day a couple of months ago and walked around the neighborhood to every single property. Under the laser measure and identified some properties that were both records. And what I found firsthand was every single house entering Redwood past LNG to Herb Samble's house is much less than thirty feet. There's not one that's thirty feet.
Right.
Some are eleven feet, twelve feet. I'm not talking about steps, Val, or the house or, or section of the house. Um, and that's consistent from Glover all the way to Herb's house. So we right now average setback is more than Herb's house does. And we've got more footage. So percentage wise, it's less of a, you know, a, 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 uh, we're less over the setback than he is percentage wise. Additionally, there are some houses that pointed out, I think in our submission, that Tiffany made. If you go further down, I don't know, it's ninety-eight or eighty, but there is a house that's really close to the street. It's a new house and it's, it's not steps, it's a significant part of the house. It's well over the setback. So when I drive around the neighborhood and I see, especially upon the edge against some random houses, this is way more conforming than those. So I just, I just wanted to state that on the record. I did this personally. And, you know, we know it's a, a great myself and I respect the map you have there in nineteen hundred, but obviously the neighborhood's very different now than it was then. So character matters.
However, every house which is in that nineteen hundred map or, or was developed further, they're pre-existing. The majority of this island has pre-existing homes, which then began to be upgraded in time. So the character of the neighborhood is what we look at in terms of the balancing. You know, say one of these houses is not like the others. That's character to a certain degree. And that has to be taken into consideration.
I don't see that distinction, Val. I mean, we've got some modern houses in there. There's some old, you know, some are old. I, I really don't see that distinction. Just saying that. Additionally, the DPC setback, um, right now, it's very different than what it was just a few years ago, right? And everywhere in the Hamptons that I've worked and built houses, you get additional relief when you have to have a consultation. And we're really, we're trying to do our best. We're under two thousand square feet and I respect everyone here. I keep coming back and trying to make this better. Uh, I can say for a fact that the health department has reviewed the health and sanitary system. They have no issue with it. They just didn't issue health, you know, in these couples, of course.
Or to your.
But, but those comments about this site plan, I, I'm not bothered.
To your point, your septic design right here, variance to be filed for relief for offset. You need a variance to get this septic done.
I don't believe so. I've worked.
It's right on the drawing. This is from your engineer, which was submitted to the board. So you have a variance required because of the offset required from the catch basin.
Okay, maybe that's true, but it's not something we feel we're not going to get because we've been reviewing already. So we've got variance before. I just did a project on Neacock's bank, super sensitive elevation six, and we have a septic there with no beginning. So we, we just did this in the passenger. Um, and the various, I do recall something that you said, Val. John said that that shouldn't be an issue at all time in this situation. John led it.
Right.
So just wanted to have the conversation, that's all. I respect and appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, great, thank you. So if there's something else, I think we'll adjourn this to our July sixteenth meeting. Could I?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is sixty-three P.
That's a request in German.
Okay. Could I have a, a motion to adjourn sixty-three Main Street to the July sixteenth meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is twenty Henry Street, and I believe this is going to be adjourned. May I have a motion to adjourn twenty Henry Street to the July sixteenth meeting?
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have fifty-seven Howard Street, and I believe that's going to be adjourned. No. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dean Sharn. I'm an attorney for the Alstons. Here tonight on behalf of Burden's family and Stanley at Howard Street. At the last meeting, when we appeared before you, we presented to you an apartment of a six hundred feet worth of residential, two base home, six feet worth of residence that is held at sporty. Barbara, can you hear her?
No, that's, I was just gonna say I'm having trouble hearing her.
Yeah, same here.
How about now? The, can you hear me now?
That's a little bit better, thank you.
Better? Okay. So at the last meeting, we were here to present a six hundred and eighty-seven square foot addition to twelve hundred where we go ahead and fix the construction at the second hour. We brought out families who'd like to move out here and make some more residents. At the moment, the twelve hundred square feet is not.
I'm sorry Denise, I'm still having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. I think it's me. It happens to have a flash. It's on you, right? Barbara, can you hear it now?
That's much better, yes.
How about now? So we appeared before you at the last meeting proposing a six hundred and eighty-seven square foot addition to an existing twelve hundred sixty-two square foot historic residence at fifty-seven Howard Street. As I mentioned, the Brownell family would like to move out here on a full time basis. They have two young sons and do not have sufficient room and residence to accommodate a bedroom or a toilet on a year round basis. We submitted a letter to the board to file to explain the rationale behind their request and require by some of the chief of the last hearing. If the board hasn't seen it, I'd be happy to read it into the record. If you can let me know of the recommendation. Uh, we, for that addition, we were requesting from you several variances, one of which was the pyramid variance. At the last meeting, the board pointed out that our pyramid drawing were based on an accurate grade and not the existing natural grade. So we have remedied that and submitted new drawings indicating the correct grade and providing you with correct pyramid analysis for each, for each elevation to have in your package. We also asked for a lot coverage variance that has changed a little. One of the issues that came up at the last meeting was whether we could accommodate another parking spot on the bike. As you know, the site is quite, um, not as barren with respect to lot size. So it was a tight fit, but we were going to use these two plots in front of the residence. They're consistent, consistent gravel and not asphalt. We're going to remove the asphalt that's there. We've reduced our little lot coverage slightly to twenty-five point seven percent instead of the requested twenty-nine point one percent. I would note that, I'm sorry, gotta be back up, instead of the requested twenty-six point one percent. The existing covered ground property is twenty-nine point one percent. So it's already, it already exceeds the limit of twenty-five percent. We're actually reducing that amount to twenty-five point seven percent. We also need a variance of two, two point nine feet for both gate of entry and our AC unit. This request for an addition is to expand an existing kitchen at the rear of the building and for a commercial second story of it that will allow for a master bedroom upstairs. It will then provide more space for solar panels that will be used level with the flat roof addition, will not be visible to neighbors or to anyone except birds or plants. It will be surrounded by vegetation that will attract bees and birds and other animals and creatures. It will shield the, the both panels even more than having that, you know, on the grid of the, the flat roof. So in summary, the, the people who provided two parking spots in front of the residence, we are asking for variances for those addition because that door on the side of the house, the house itself is situated seven point one feet from the property line. So we can't, there's nowhere to go further. So that is the, the most, the smallest variance that we could robust for addition to this house. We've reduced the block coverage variance, the block coverage variance. The building coverage variance will remain the same at one point three percent. The pyramid variance also remains the same at, I have it as one thousand one hundred and fifty-four square feet. At the notice is three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet, which I think is to combine not conforming when you add the proposed with the existing. So just to clarify that. I think I covered everything that you asked for at the last meeting. I should be able to summarize for you about speed, performance, and everything that we had to do.
So you repeat again what the new pyramid, the new proposed pyramid variance, the total's thirty-nine thirty-six. How much of that is new?
One thousand one hundred and fifty-one cubic feet.
Fifteen hundred and fifty-four, thank you.
You're welcome.
It was one thousand one hundred and fifty-four. One oh five four? No, no, one thousand one hundred and fifty-four. One thousand one hundred and fifty-four. Right, correct.
The four hundred and fifty-nine square foot addition on the second floor.
Yeah.
So represents roughly five percent of the total volume.
And you won't be able to see the, the solar panel from the second floor of the house to the east? You know how the code, it's the, as you're facing the house, the house to the left has a second floor. You won't be able to see that from there? It's just the way the code reads. It can't be seen from the street and it can't be seen from surrounding houses. I would have thought that you could see it from the house next door.
No, I've never been in the house next door.
I don't know how, how much the house goes back.
They've been notified if they, but I don't think the solar, they didn't get notified about the solar equipment, I don't think.
They did.
Was that, okay, all right. Do we have any comments from, from the neighbors?
We had a positive letter.
Do you know which house? From that one?
From the, it's actually from the other house.
Okay, thank you. So.
There was no solar house.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think. Yeah, I didn't, I don't think the solar was noticed.
Yes.
Yeah, so the neighbors would have no idea that there's not going to be solar equipment. That's a new thing.
I don't.
So we might want to check with them, or maybe it has to be re-noticed. Liz, could you read exactly what it says about solar?
It says, "Solar and alternative energy systems shall not be visible from an adjacent street or from an adjacent property," and that's if you're within the historic district.
So when it says.
If it is, then you need a variance.
So it says property, not house?
Says, "From an adjacent street or from an adjacent property."
So a second floor of a house, is that considered the property?
Yes.
It's considered part of the property. It's probably something you guys would determine.
My determination would be yes. But doesn't mean standing on the flat ground. It means can you see it from?
Right.
Any part of the neighboring house.
That's right. So we would have to re-notice for the solar.
And laundry, this is.
Well, it's just, it's part of the code and it keeps coming up. Some of us think that we should change the code if there's that much public interest in adding solar equipment, but it might not be the job of the zoning board when it's clearly in violation of the code to issue variances.
Right.
A lot of the variances we issue, it's a gray area or it's something that, that no one will know, but this is so specific in the code that I, I at least for one vote am reluctant to.
And it's.
Just set a precedent where we're sort of ignoring the code.
It's not just the code though, it's also the national guidelines. I mean, we're part of historic districts, so we have guidelines that we have to follow that are national.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to make one statement.
Yeah.
It's just that we've been here a few times and this has happened to me with other applications too, but I try to go through everything and figure out all the variances that I can do for best probability, and the last couple of times I've come and been told that it's not the right variance, and so my client is very frustrated.
Well, we didn't know about the solar. It wasn't in the public notice.
I know, but I didn't know it had to be noticed.
It may be, well, it may.
Well, it's.
It may, it may be because the building inspector didn't believe it needed to be moved or being moved from a new property.
Yeah.
That's where it, it's in there.
That may be his determination.
They went through the.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I mean.
It's just for this board, as far as I remember, this is the first time the solar has come up before this board.
No, it was, it was mentioned at the last meeting. It was part of the, it was part of the initial presentation. It was not noticed.
You're in the historic district, so it's an issue. I'm just expressing that it's disappointing to keep coming back and not be told that we need a variance. I understand my job to have everything known, but the building inspector will put hard down what you, what variances you need, and I might not always know every variance every time, and it's just.
Well, personally, I wouldn't have thought you needed solar because it's flat, but I didn't.
That may be his determination.
Right, because it's flat on the, so.
Well, maybe it's not visible and so you don't need it.
That's reasonable.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
We're guessing that it's visible, so.
So what type of solar system is, because we have also had one of a Tesla solar.
Yes, that's the one I was talking about. I mentioned it last, at the last meeting. So my client happens to be an art environmentalist who's been involved in solar production for a long time, and the screen is to put the solar system on this property, and it's a Tesla solar system. It's highly advanced, it's flush with the flat roof, and we have plantings all the way around it, but I.
I would suspect that the plantings are going to screen anything.
Oh, was, there was a.
Do we have all that? I mean, but I, we didn't, I don't think we knew whether it's a box that sits up a foot and a half or whether it's the flat Tesla string those or what it is.
Well, I just, I explained it at the last meeting.
Even if it's panels, they, they don't sit off the roof very far. I don't know if the standoff, because I just did one, the standoff is a few inches and the panels, it doesn't sit up three feet in the air or something. And the guy, the national guidelines prefer actually solar panels on the rear of a house in a flat roof, correct?
Mm-hmm. Guidelines are flat roof or on the ground. However, there's a.
I just, I just asked the question, is it visible? That's all.
Is it a Tesla?
Maybe it's not. From the house next door. Okay, then it's, if it's not visible, then it's a moot point.
Then you're not granting a variance for it, right?
We wouldn't need to grant a variance if it's not visible.
Right.
I raised the question, is it visible from the second floor of that house? That's all. So we don't need to grant a variance if we're making an assumption that it's not going to be visible.
And I guess if the building inspector decides it is visible, then I'll, I'll come back and ask for variance, but for now, I, I have to look forward on that basis.
Okay, I do have one other question. One of our missions, as you know, is to, is to look at variances and see if there's a way that they can be reduced. Howard Street is particularly challenged for parking and is all the house, the, the small houses on Howard Street, and there are several more that are going to follow, they're all being made bigger, and part of the bigness is taking away from parking. This is a residential street, it might as well be Main Street on any weekday because you can't park in front of your own house. So I would ask the question, is there no way to push the driveway further into the backyard so that there can be parking for three cars and you won't need a variance for parking?
Well, tech, can I just address that? Because technically, they may not need a variance for parking, because if there was the, the four bedrooms, you're not increasing the bedroom size, correct? Were pre-existing before the code was written for parking, then the parking is grandfathered, correct?
That's how, yeah, that's.
That was the, the building inspector's determination, so.
We didn't want to ignore that comment.
No, 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 I, I know, but we, technically, we may not need to give you a variance for any parking, because if, I mean, the house, I, I do have any idea from your research when the house was?
Oh, when the house was built. I have it in there. It's, I don't have it memorized, but it's 19 something.
No, no, it's probably 1840, 1850, somewhere in there.
I have, I have.
It's 1860.
When?
1860.
And, and, and then the driveway has existed in its form since, do you know, on an earlier survey?
The aerials, the back in time, it's, that parking has been like that as far back as I could go on aerials, which I think was 1970, county books.
So when, when did, do you, do we, Liz, do we know when the parking policy went into effect? Because I, I don't think you.
So the renovations of the house are not significant enough?
The only bedroom count, bedroom count is the only thing that, that throws parking into a variance.
I thought some of the grandfathered, pre-existing, non-conforming got thrown out when the renovations got to a certain percentage of the existing structure.
It's not, not what we had, we discussed this with Tim, the building inspector.
Okay.
And the interpretation there was that it's all based on bedroom count. So the bedroom count doesn't change the parking. If it's pre-existing, non-conforming can stay. If they added a bedroom, then they would have to adjust their parking.
And you are going to add one space, so.
We did.
I appreciate that.
Do you want me to show you the survey, the new survey?
No, we, we have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parking spots, spot, like I said, and we turned the asphalt, the spot into gravel, public drainage, and also the, we reduced our tool block.
Okay, that's all I have.
Is that what you recall? I just, Val, from what was just discussed about her.
Yeah, yeah. They had one spot and it grew to two. You can say that is subject provision.
That's right.
Correct.
Right, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, so.
Magic voice one. But one state. Magic voice two. Magic voice three. Magic voice four. Magic voice five. Original voice.
Sorry. It's not but five. Follow me, sit up.
Um, does anyone, Damon, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about anything else while we're waiting?
No.
Uh, so while Liz is looking for something, do, do any members of the public have any questions about 57 Howard Street? Anyone out in Zoom?
I don't see anything here on Zoom.
Okay. So I can still request one more parking space even though we can't require it, correct?
Sure.
So I would, I would request that, just for the record. I just want it on the record.
I understand.
Parking's a really big problem.
At the last meeting, you asked for two. You said I came back with two. You would vote in favor of the application. That's why I came back with two. I just wanted to remind you of the conversation.
I just wanted it to be the code.
Just, we can't fit another spot in.
Well, you can. You can push further into the backyard. You don't want to because they're garden stuff.
You don't want to ruin the aesthetic.
Okay. So while Liz is looking for that, how is everyone feeling about the variances? Am, do?
Well, the Howard Street is, is challenging, and that house is exceedingly challenging in terms of what has to be done. It seems to me that they have met all the, the variance and compromise, so I would be in favor.
You think, like, Tim?
Uh, I'll reluctantly be in favor.
Okay.
Val? I stand in favor as this application has decreased significantly in size and scale. I think that's a very important distinction to make. We asked to reduce the proposal and it's clearly followed that pathway, including the inclusion of extra parking.
Okay, Damon?
Yes, you know, basically the same here, you know, there's been some compromises that's been made and, you know, the parking situation is, is a non-issue now, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Maybe we can remove the beds from the guest house, so that doesn't add to the parking woes. You said it's going to be a studio, but right now there's nothing in there but beds, so if you have a room and there are beds in it, I call it a bedroom. So to me, there's really five bedrooms. The applicant said he would, doesn't use it as a bedroom, but there are nothing, there's nothing in that shed but beds.
Full bunk beds.
Two bunk beds, and there's a single bed, it's divided in the middle. It's two bunk beds and a single bed, so it's a bed shed or a bedroom or whatever, which aggravates the parking. So I would like to see all that come out and have it used as a studio where nobody will, will be staying there.
Everyone stays back there.
Well, it's just if you got a room, you got a bed, it's a bedroom. There are no toys in there, there's no desks, there's no nothing, there's just beds. So the average person would look at it and say, this is being used for sleeping.
I get it.
Okay, thank you.
The only recent amendment to the parking section I could find was from 2014, but I'll have to ask the coach, but it's really not clear when.
Right.
Residential portion.
Right.
amended.
Right. It, it looks like though, that we're, it, it's old, it predates the, if, if we back to 1970, it predates the parking regulations, so.
It's a bit of a backwards and wrong.
Right.
GPS. I might even go back further on that.
Yeah.
The lower levels.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I would.
So unless something changes, so do you feel, do you feel comfortable that we can proceed to?
Yes.
Okay, great. So do you have any more comments or questions or anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. So could I have a motion?
Can we write in a decision that the, the additional shed at the back of the property will not be used as a bedroom?
We'll make that a condition.
Because it.
We'll make that a condition.
That's what I mean, a condition.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So could I have a motion to close the public hearing for 57 Howard Street?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for 57 Howard Street that puts in a condition that the beds in the accessory building have to be removed?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, next on the agenda is 5 Washington Avenue.
Again, members of the board, I need to turn on a case against the applicant. This can hear you. This is an application for a 390 on its perfect garage as a need for requiring variances from the provisions of the village code. At the last meeting, there were a few issues that were identified that they asked us to grant on the plans, and we have done that. One of the issues was, we want to mention is proposed to be located inside the new garage, but we need to show this stuff out without a permit from the boundary line between this property and the new hiring property. We found that out that this is, well, 292. We also have to make sure that our plot plan was a match, our renovation plan, our renovation plan, as we have, we can't match together, and we showed that she meant fence inside the landing as opposed to on the outside, so the number of rest for. Which is, from following the board that we did have a neighbor appear. We just submit a letter for. Which is to give me a paper.
Great, thank you. Do any board members have any questions?
I do not. I do not.
Damon?
No, no questions.
Great. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to 5 Washington Avenue? Anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. Uh, do you have anything else to add? I think you satisfied all of the requirements that we had. Great, thank you very much. So could I have a motion to close the public hearing for 5 Washington Avenue?
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for 5 Washington Avenue?
Right.
Oh, you drafted it already? That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, so it's already done, so we don't need a motion. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, next on the agenda is 203 Madison Street. I'm guessing that's adjourned? Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn 203 Madison Street to the July 16th meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you. Hey. That's new for us.
Thank you.
Okay, now onto new business. The first on the agenda is 4 Notre Dame Road. Is there anyone to address? Great, thank you. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Please acquire, please offer permits on behalf of the applicant.
Great, you're not, are you an attorney?
I'm not.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear her, her name, please.
Please acquire. Please acquire. So just to clear up, uh, quick comment is, it was noticed for the swimming pool located in front yard as a waterfront property. There's also a requested side yard relief that was in the denial boarding from ten to, uh, Z B secretary, it was not noticed for that, so I just let it go.
Right. Renoticed, yes.
I just wanted to mention that.
It's, and, and basically the setback is, I think you're at fourteen or something?
Thirteen point, I'm sorry, twelve point seven feet.
Okay, twelve point seven.
To the existing end of the deck.
Okay.
So that's what we're requesting.
What's, what's it, what's the code called for?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Thank you.
So we're asking for relief from section three hundred dash nine point one A zoning code to allow accessory buildings in the required front yard. Um, and if you said this particular situation, it's a waterfront property and therefore the front yard is the waterfront side. Um, that's traditionally where you would place a swimming pool on waterfront property. The pool, we're also asking relief to, uh, from section three hundred dash four point three to allow the pool in the side yard setback of twelve point seven feet where fifteen is required. And that is because we have a pool in the existing deck footprint. So the pool we're requesting of a hundred thirty-six square feet, we're measuring eight by seventeen feet. The property is located on upper side harbor home, since the front yard is waterfront side. Property is a narrow lot, it's eighty feet wide, so that does maybe factor in a little bit. We're just asking for those two variances. The property will be, I'm sorry, the pool will be screened from the neighboring lots with the existing vegetation. I also have a landscaping plan, if you care to review that as well, that's been done, that shows some hydrangeas will be planted along the edge of the pool and they'll be also screening planting along the property lines. Um, I have had correspondence, a phone call from the neighbor to the north, to the opposite side, she has raised objections to the swimming pool. We've not been in communication with the, the satellite side, but they are friends of those neighbors, all over the park. Um, just going through the area of variance standards, the proposed granting of the requested variance should not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The applicant feels that, uh, the swimming pool is a common accessory use in residential property on a residentially zoned lot. There are other swimming pools in the neighborhood and so therefore they've just requesting a similar variance to place the pool in the front yard. Uh, the variance cannot be achieved by some other method. Given the location of the lot, the arrangement of the house on the property, if we were to put it in the required rear yard, that would be along the street, which is not traditional for a waterfront lot. In addition, the sanitary system for the property is between the house and the street, which would require the relocation of that, obviously Harvard committee would have some objections to that as well. Uh, well, the reflective area variance, do you believe it's, uh, substantial? We believe it's not substantial for the side yard setback relief, it's about fifteen percent of the, uh, request of the fifteen foot setback. Uh, the next one is the proposed placement of the swimming pool located, uh, it's within the existing footprint of the deck. And we're not asking to go any closer to the wetlands, we know we have to go get Harvard committee approval. Uh, we're just asking to put the pool at the current side yard setback of the deck and to maintain that. The pool equipment will be located underneath the deck, so we're not asking for relief from that, that is shown on, uh, one of the plans. Was there to answer any questions?
Yes, I, I'd like to know.
Sure.
What is the retaining wall?
In the front yard?
Yes.
It's a, on the street side, it's a low wall and it's there for the sanitary system, it's existing.
Is it wood?
I believe it's stone, it's existing there right now.
It's concrete.
Okay, it's a poured concrete waterproof retaining wall, it's necessary for the sanitary system that's there. And it is low, it's not significant height.
And, and the pool equipment I can see is just on the other side of the swimming pool under the deck and so there'll be sort of a hatch or something to get into it.
The, the deck is elevated.
Right.
Four feet or so.
Any other questions for the board?
I would just observe that the pool is within the footprint of the deck, but also in a way within the footprint of the house. Which we could write that in our, our decision so that it kind of, uh, differentiates it possibly from others. So no, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I, I pick up on that distinction because this is an above-ground pool, which feels like a continuation of the deck. Although we don't look at this from a environmental perspective, this far above groundwater, which is an important consideration. So therefore I think it has good qualities in terms of exception to the law.
Damon, do you have any comments or questions?
Have any particular concerns with it?
Are, I, but did?
I think he said he doesn't have a particular concern.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to Four Notre Dame Road? Anyone on Zoom? No, nothing? Do you have anything else to add? Okay, so we'll adjourn, it'd have to be renoticed, but it looks like the decision could be favorable, so could we have?
Should we ask to write a decision?
Okay, so I have to write.
Next time and just do the renoticing and then close it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the meantime, we could write a favorable decision.
Yes.
So that you'll have that next meeting, yeah.
Great, okay, appreciate that.
Great, all right, thank you. So could I have a motion to adjourn Four Notre Dame Road to the July sixteenth meeting?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And then could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for the Four Notre Dame Road, taking into account the side yard setback variance?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
I'll approve, it includes the retaining wall as part of this request relief request.
Is it offset three feet? The property line, yes.
Isn't the retaining wall there?
Okay.
It's there now and it is.
Okay.
No.
No, 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 it's not new.
It's, it's a, okay, no.
It's an existing retaining wall.
It's not, wasn't on the, it's not on the list needing a variance.
Okay, it's just about the pool.
Yeah, correct, cool.
Okay.
All approved, aye.
Wait, did we get a second?
We did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Next under new business, we have, oops, sorry about that, forty-three Bluff Point Road.
That's the wall.
So. Great, could you, um, stick your name and address for the record?
Sure, Anthony Gorman Glass, sixty-eight, Peter Street, I prefer to send anything, one of their sure also.
Are they going to speak? Okay, so could you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, great, you may proceed.
Okay, make a motion to open?
Oh, I'm sorry, could I have, could I have a motion to open forty-three Bluff Point Road? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, you may proceed.
Okay, so what we have here is a, um, current conditions are a, um, existing one-story, um, single-family dwelling, it's a little bit over a thousand square feet. Um, interestingly, the property has been in the, um, ownership of the same family for almost fifty years, uh, since nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, but as, you know, families change and expand, uh, families needs, uh, change, so, uh, for the house, uh, that's why we're here presenting, uh, a one- and two-story conditions. Reason why we are here for, um, for CBA is there are some, uh, challenges to the topography and the orientation of the existing house. So the house, uh, the, the high point of the property, which is the, um, southwest corner, it's nineteen point five feet above sea level, uh, the, south, uh, yeah, excuse me, the southeast corner, um, is about, uh, fourteen feet above sea level and then it kind of cascades down to, uh, Morris Cove. The existing first floor elevation seventeen point five feet above sea level, um, and that is actually, so that's almost two feet lower than the high point of the property. The house is, um, it, it conforms to R twenty zoning, but it just, um, it, it does have the, uh, fifty-foot, uh, bluff crest, um, now, uh, setback intersecting most of the, uh, part of the house. The house is also not perfectly orthogonal, uh, to the property line, that was one of the things that was driving the deeper, uh, pyramid variance here. So combination of the topography and, um, the house not being orthogonal to these property lines. The house is, um, if you kind of look at the, it, it in context, there are two, the house to the, um, east is, it's a very lower elevation than this house. And the house to the west is considerably higher elevation than this house and that kind of also helped drive our thinking in terms of how we were expanding the house in favoring the, um, west side rather than the, uh, whether, rather than, uh, the east side of the property. Also, there's more room to expand on the west side because of that, um, that bluff, uh, bluff spec, uh, setback. Uh, what else can I say here, we're, uh, we're looking at a, uh, seven hundred fifty-four cubic foot, uh, pyramid, uh, variance. That is, I believe, the only variance that were required, there was a note here about, uh, uh, retaining wall setback, I'm not sure what that is. Because I, I don't believe there are any retaining walls in the property. But at any rate, here is, uh, you know, basically your, um, your, uh, pyramid diagrams, as you can see, there's an awful lot of green here, not a whole lot of red. It's really just this little clip of the, um, of the northwest corner that is coming into, um, violation of the pyramid law. The highest point, um, you know, from the lowest point of the property, if it's into the house to the bridge line, is going to be a little bit over thirty feet. So it's actually, even though there's a considerable topographical change, the house is still even at its highest point going to be less than the thirty-five feet that's allowed. There are no FEMA issues here, so the house, uh, first floor will stay at seventeen point five, uh, feet, we're just adding that, uh, half, um, half of a second story on that footprint. Few things, the existing, um, um, should just add a few things about the existing floor plan of the, floor plan of the existing house, in particular, the location of the staircase are kind of driving a little bit of the, the second floor layout as well. And, um, that's really about it, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have a Harvard committee application for this coming down the road, uh, but this is the first step for the pyramid.
So from the, from the property line at the street back to the house is thirty-six point five, is that correct?
Uh, from the house to the street is, um, at its closest point, it existing is thirty-six point five, proposed is thirty feet. Uh, we've got that rear yard as a front yard.
Right, right.
That's why that's there.
Right.
That was, should expand a little bit on the first floor, that was a logical place to go. I'd also add, there's quite a bit of a breakaway between the actual inch of paint, uh, paving and, uh, the property line, it's probably almost fifteen feet. So the house feels setback a lot further, sent like it's sent further back from the street than it actually is.
And, and do you know, just out of curiosity, on the street side, how tall the house is?
Um, the street elevation is, well, certainly under thirty feet, I'm gonna say it's probably about twenty-three, twenty-four feet. It's not a full two-story, it's, it's really a story and a half, uh, gable.
And on the rear side from grade, it's?
There's thirty-one.
Thirty-one feet. At the, at its tallest point.
Are we adding bedrooms?
We are, let's see, there are three, four, four bedrooms existing and we're throwing it at, uh, four, yeah.
So, yeah, parking's.
A one-note.
Yeah, we are actually expanding the driveway, um, so we're gonna get a couple extra spots in there.
So you let parking for?
Four cars.
Four, oh, really, okay. So could, maybe that could be shown on the survey? Where the cars fit, because it's not.
It sort of looks like there's only parking for one car, no, that's.
Or two cars or something, yeah.
Yeah, the, the existing, um, the existing driveway always stops, I mean, stops just past the property line, so we're gonna bring that much further in, right up to the, um, side of the house, expand the parking that way.
Right, okay.
Did speak to the landscape architect, uh, about it, he feels like you can make that happen without needing any retaining walls despite the, uh, problem.
So do you want that shown on it, can, can we specify in the, in a decision that there'll be parking for four cars or?
We can do that or we can see it, we can do it either way.
I mean, it's fine, we're looking at the, we're looking at the landscape, find any ways.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, Ham, do you have any questions?
No.
No, Damon?
No questions.
No questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to forty-three Bluff Point Road?
Yes.
Right, you could step up to the podium? And the microphone is above you.
That's the microphone.
Yes, could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Peter Bronstein.
Okay.
I live at forty-seven Bluff Point Road, immediately to the west of the southern property.
Great, could you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, great, you may proceed.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for inviting public comment. This property, I'd like to start by saying, is an extremely important property. Environmentally, aesthetically, and ultimately the store. And it's interesting that they filed a coastal assessment form as the short governmental form. And they were asked in that if the location is contiguous or have any potential adverse effect upon significant fish or wildlife habitat or significant resources, the local or statewide significant, uh, or natural, uh, protective features, uh, for an erosion hazard area. And they gave us summary note to each of those questions. And I would say, uh, that number one, it, it is a thickly significant fish and wildlife habitat. Uh, I've seen bald eagles, uh, I even saw golden eagle last year, uh, ospreys, uh, eaglets, ducks of all kinds, uh, swans. It's an important nesting area, uh, and, and feeding area for birds. Uh, it's a fish breeding area, there are plants and oysters in the cove, there are large strikers that come in and lay eggs and fish hatch in that little Morris Cove area. Uh, the property is directly across from, uh, Elaine Seibek's house, that's now been preserved at great expense of this community and great significance to this community. The writer's cabin and the Seibek house are directly across from this property and the, the, uh, size of the house that's being proposed will create a permanent lighting fixture at night that will shine into the, the writer's, uh, uh, haven that we've created, uh, on a Seibek property. And, and, uh, the fact that they just dismissed, uh, that significant statewide and local, uh, significance, uh, is unfortunate. And I think it deserves a second look and I'm surprised that before we even had this question of whether there should be a zoning variance, uh, that there's not a full environmental, uh, investigation as to the importance of this particular property. This is a small lot and if you look at the, and I'm, I'm sure you have, if you look at the survey of the progress, Park Nanakoma uh, on the shore was a development created, uh, in nineteen thirty, ninety-four years ago. Uh, when the entirety of the Morris Cove area along Bluff Point Road was carved up into tiny little lots. And, uh, they wanted to make a, a beach area on the point as a communal beach club. Uh, and, and this was, I've, I've seen the brochures for it, this was an idyllic area. And and this was, I've I've seen the brochures for it. This was an idyllic area that was being. Offered by a real estate developer in nineteen thirty. And and that's how these tiny little lots came into being. So this particular property. Is, the existing is fourteen point five feet setback from my plot line. It's within the sixteen feet at at its nearest point, and they want to reduce that to fourteen feet. And that doesn't even include what they now have recently, within the last five years. Installed an air conditioning unit, which is at least three feet wide within that barrier. So, so. The the house is violating the setback rules as it is. The deck that they're incorporating in this new structure. Is actually a new construction. It too was built within the last. Four or five years. I watched it get built. I wondered whether there was a permit for it. I don't believe there ever was. And I think that's part of this retaining wall that's an existing position, but the deck itself is a new construct. And that deck is going to become the justification for their moving the house out. And gaining extra bedrooms. If you look at the number of bedrooms they've got, it's five bedroom. And the, the. The five bedrooms and five bathrooms on this lot is a lot of development for a lot of size. It it's, it's twenty. It's, it's, what was it, twenty? Three hundred square feet, is that, is that right? Or no, it's less than that. It it's ten thousand four hundred square feet. It's, it's point two three acres. But part of that land, if you look at the current survey, is underwater. It's under the mean of high water mark. So it's not even that full amount of property. And if you look at the red line on this survey. That's the, the, the top of the bluff. I mean, that's really the edge of the property because the, 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 the. Property drops off to have a water on the other side of that bluff. It's all wetland on the other side of that that goes way down. So the, the house itself, the existing is set back thirty seven feet from that red line. On the east side of the property. The, 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 if they extend out that deck and the house out on the deck, it's even closer. The thing I want to point out about their new design, if I may, is that. They have a wonderful space which is enclosing this deck that they just built. Called a bonus room. Now, this bonus room is eight point six feet long or wide. And and it doesn't say how long it is, but it's at least double that long, so it's at least seventeen feet long. So you've got an eight point six feet by seventeen foot room with three grand windows right on the water. And it's right next to a bathroom. And that's just a bonus room. That's not a bedroom. Don't be confused, unlike that last property that had beds in the, in the. In the, in the back structure. This is not going to be used as a bedroom, clearly. So, you know, I'm being, that's a little sarcastic. I don't mean to be sarcastic. I shouldn't use sarcastic, sarcastic. I apologize for that. But it's, the bonus room is simply another bedroom. Quite clearly, it's right next to a bathroom and it's right on the water. And so this is really a six, a six bedroom house with five bathrooms. And a good sized laundry room on that so-called basement level. And all of that needs a septic system. That, that this property is slanted. The, the, the architect described that. This is on a slant. The whole property slants off to the east. And that septic system is now apparently going to be. At least partially under a, 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 what they're calling a driveway. So they're gonna put space before cars. I don't see where, where you have room for a, 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 a septic system and a driveway. All within the setbacks and on that property are not going to reach off into the neighboring property. I think this house, i- i- if I can just comment as a member of the public. I think this house, when you look at it from the water elevation, the north elevation, is huge. It's too big for this property. The concept is wrong. The reason they need a variance is because that whole second. What they're calling second, but looks like a third floor to me for the north elevation. That whole third floor wouldn't be there. If, if you didn't grant a variance. And and this whole structure with the extra bedrooms and the lack of parking and the lack of. Not even the septic, there's no septic plan that I've seen in our decisions here. I just think that we're, we're way ahead of ourselves. It's not been an environmental investigation or, or assessment. I don't see the, the parking, if in fact it's six bedrooms. There's two spaces for the three and an extra three spaces for the others. I- i- if you think about the parking, the way they've got it designed, you're gonna have to have people. Move the cars out of the way to get the other cars out. You're gonna be backing all these cars out on the driveway. When we built our house. You, you suggested to us and we agreed to put a driveway that went around. So you wouldn't be backing out on the street because you, you pointed out to us that backing out of the street created a safety hazard. We agree with you. We didn't fight you and we built a driveway that went around. This is a safety hazard. There are people who walk their dogs there, ride their bikes there. This is a, a, a very topless neighborhood. And and you shouldn't have people just backing cars out and backing cars out to back cars out. These cars with six bedrooms are gonna be parked on the driveway, on the, on the public roadway. They'll be parked there overnight, violation of city ordinance. I, I think this is a, a proposal that is, is, is out of keeping the character of the neighborhood. As, it is based on a forming premise as, those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, great. Could you state your name and address for the record?
C. Scott Brown, ten Bluff Point Lane.
You raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, you may proceed.
Thank you. Basically, I am a neighbor that is directly across the cove from this property and I'm adjacent to the Steinbeck writers. Group, which I am on the board of. And basically, I would just like to echo what Mr. Bronstein said about the lighting. It's like currently, we have, I go over and leave notes on, in the mailbox to the house now. Because they have outdoor lights on, they shine directly across the cove and light up our entire property, including the Steinbeck property. So. I would just like to say that however this goes forward in whatever iteration, that they're taking into some consideration the, the light pollution. Because it's a real issue.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Is curious or anyone else? Okay, Anthony, do you wanna address any of the comments that were made?
Start, I mean, just to put things in perspective here in context, you know, compared to the house next door of the forty seven. We're not proposing a swimming pool. We're not proposing a pool head. We're not proposing dock. Obviously, we're going to upgrade the. This, the septic system to comply to, to the, the village bedroom account. One thing, you know, about, about the parking, actually, the idea of doing a curved driveway, I think, which is certainly in campaign. I think the only thing I would be concerned about there is the fact that we would have to cut down some. Cut down some existing trees to make that work. But, you know, everybody's in agreement that agreement was that, that's fine. As far as the dark skies, as far as the light pollution, you know, we could make sure that any new exterior lighting is dark sky. High end, of course. I'm not really privy to what the, what the history behind the back deck is, but.
They had a permit in twenty thirteen for it and it was sealed and closed.
Okay, great. So then that was all we love. As far as the setbacks go, the fourteen foot setbacks, I believe we, we conform to be. Get four tenths relief for the setbacks of fourteen. I think that, I mean, it's like thirteen is what's allowed there. So, yeah, I mean, as far as zoning goes, this is other than the. Other than the pyramid variance, which we're requesting and potentially just clarifying the parking. Spots. That's really all that we, we need zoning variance for. You know, this is obviously going to be a major renovation, so if there's any concerns about things like. Mechanical equipment, we can make sure that they're conforming to the renovation. I will say that obviously this house needs, the, the, the forms that the gentleman next door was referring, was referring to, I mean, they're. They're required for every application. So that's why we, we did them. It wasn't because there was any special thing that happened here that. That triggered the need for that. Any zoning board of appeals application, whether it's on the water or not, is going to require that. We're of course going to need to go before harbor committee, which I, which I know is going to be a little bit more, get much more in depth. In terms of sort of the environmental impacts of the project. We're obviously going to be proposing re- re- vegetation bulk. Buffer and, and things of that nature, which is, you know, not, which is the purview of the harbor committee, not the zoning board of appeals. So certainly all that will be looked into. You know, if you want me to, I can FOIA the, the, the property next door, just to give you some comparisons of size. But I mean, our GFA here is going to be something like a little bit over two thousand square feet. I mean, I would say just eyeballing at that house next door, it is about four or five thousand square feet. And it's both higher in elevation relative to sea level and the bridge line, so it can be higher. So, I mean. You know, they, as they mentioned, they got approvals for, for what they want and it was a much more substantial project.
So. So we would like you to show the GFA calculations on the plan somewhere. What do you want?
They are in the middle there. I think we should do an A one. Probably lower, right, probably lower left turn corners. No, we can go to harbor committee after this.
It just, it doesn't show what is. The GFA for the proposal is listed. And the total, but not what's allowed. And one question, Liz, is. Is on this property, what do they use as the basis in terms of the lot size? Because not the whole lot would be. Used with the GFA calculation, correct?
Area of the mean high water is ten thousand four hundred six and then the others, eight thousand.
I think it's kind of a moot point because the limit is twenty five, the bottom limit is twenty five hundred square feet. We're at two thousand two hundred fifty two. Doesn't matter.
So can you just add that, though, to your, your chart there?
No, make it more obvious where it is. I'll put it on the floor size.
But, but, and just also include the. What the, the allowable GFA is. So it's, just so it's clear on the plan. Do you, and does anyone else have?
I have a question for Mr. Brown. If, if something were stipulated as to the lighting and the effect that it would have on your property and the Steinbeck property, otherwise, are you okay with this?
I didn't. Not a hundred percent, but it's like, you know, I'm just a member of the public. And basically, my, my biggest concern is the, the, the. Light pollution and those, those large windows at any given night, if that room is lit up. That is going to broadcast light across the, the cove to everybody on the other side.
Okay, the exterior lighting by code has to meet dark sky.
Right.
Compliance. So any exterior light, they can't shoot exterior lights across the cove. That's not legal anymore. Right, but all the lighting on the exterior would have to meet dark sky. That doesn't include wind, light from windows, though.
Right. It's just gonna, those massive windows will definitely change the, throughout the cove in the evening.
Okay, thank you. So a lot of the other observations that were made. Don't really apply to this particular board. They're more for the harbor committee, which this application will go before. All the environmental concerns, all that kind of thing. It's not that we don't care about it, but we're really, our job is to building code. And what variances might be needed. And so in our opinion, or at least in my opinion, the variance that's needed for this. Is, is very small compared to variances that we've granted all over. So I don't, I don't want to get into discussion. I just wanted to make that. Observation. Your points were good ones, but I don't want you to think that we ignore them, but they're really not part of, of. The kinds of things that this board rules on.
No, I, I, I understand that. It was only the, the particular variance enables that third floor. And without that variance, the third floor is not enabled. And, and you get a smaller structure.
Okay, right, thank you. I would comment on the third floor that by code. This is not considered a story. Any portion of the house that's surrounded by grade on sides, front and side. You know, two sides and the front, you can have the rear exposed and it does not classify this as a three story house. It's a walkout basement, in other words, so.
Yeah, I, I understand it reads as, as a two stories on the back. But that by definition, that lower level is, is considered, is still considered a cellar, not a story.
Right.
If I get, if I could put it another way, it enables three or four rooms. Which will not be enabled. And, and therefore the house will be more scale with piece of property that more in, in scale than what, what. Would be compatible with, with the Steinbeck property.
Thank you, thank you. But it, to your point, the applicant in terms of height, we take height from spot elevations. And this is clearly below the thirty five feet that's maximum. However, it does read, you know, all houses that are on waterfront can read taller from the water side. I don't believe that the glass is within our purview. That's an architectural review board. Commentary.
There are just a couple of things that probably should be added to the survey, just so you know that they're going to comply. And one is. The parking, I think we should have you show the parking on the survey. So that.
I just wanna.
Can I just run through my?
Has this board's opinion on this. If we did show a bigger parking. A parking area, you know, perhaps with two entrances. Which would probably trigger needing to remove some trees. Would that be, you know, I'm just thinking ahead to harbor committee and. Architectural review board when they're asking, oh, why are you taking down this nice tree? And we could say, okay, well, this is kind of the. You know, the trade off to get a little bit more, you know, kind of driveway situation, so you're not having to back out. Yes, right. I think the biggest one there, I think, shouldn't be affected, but there are a couple of smaller ones that are closer to the, closer to the street.
I, I think that probably if they're not significant trees, it, it wouldn't be an issue. I, I.
Oh, what's interesting is that the parking irrespective of where the curb has occurred, you don't have. That remains unchanged. Two or thirty foot offset of your house is not fine. So as it gets left or right, as you face the house during the street, the parking doesn't improve. No matter where that curb got curved. So it, it's a moot point to move that parking. And you need room for the septic system, presumably, in effect.
Yeah, we're, we're working on the design of the septic.
So I, I, I just made a couple of notes of things that would be good to. So I I I just made a couple of notes of things that w- would be good to include on your survey, one would be parking to show that you've got space. For adequate parking for the the five bedrooms, one is to show the area that you're going to put the septic system, even if it's just the proposed area. So that we know that it fits, we talked about the GFA, we talked about the dark sky, but also one thing that. Houses have and was mentioned that isn't included on here are AC condensers and because you're already. You know, close to the property line, they, you know, we just want to make sure that they comply because they're going to go in. And be in a conforming location, so I don't know if anybody else has any other things that.
Well, I I agree because when I went to review it and just looking at it, was just the seven hundred and fifty four cubic feet. And I was within the purview of doing it, but there's other considerations that uh are not even indicated initially. So I would like to see more information.
I think we do have room to swing the uh the uh air conditioning over to the. Two feet there, over to the uh uh east side of the property. Will actually be lower there too, so it'd be less, it would be less intrusive to the.
Great, so um unless you have anything else, I think we'll we'll adjourn this to our next meeting, do you? Any other com- any other comments from members of the board?
No.
Okay, great, could I have a motion to adjourn forty three Block Point Road to the July sixteenth meeting?
So move.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great, thank you. So next on the agenda is one fifty Main Street. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to one fifty six Main Street?
Yes.
Oh, great.
So. Moment of shit here, sir.
Were you here when we did this one?
Yeah.
I remember this, it is tight.
I changed a couple, first there was a garage.
Right.
And each time parking disappeared.
Right.
Yeah, this doesn't say anything about the parking.
Great, uh could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Anthony Vermaudon, sixty eighth Union Street.
Great, could you raise your right hand, so as to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Great, thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, so this is a um give you a little bit of the kind of a straightforward building coverage area. But a little bit of the background behind this, uh me, this how um project, it went through the boards back in twenty nineteen. Which was re- renovation of the main house uh installed apart. One other, one other aspect of the the main of of this property was, there was sitting behind the main house, there was this about six hundred square foot. Cottage, right, um it was falling apart, it was right in the kind of worst spot possible position on the property. Um we actually discussed uh with with the uh, it was legal, it had a had a CO. Um as a as a nonconforming um um CEO, I think there were actually like five CEOs in the house or something when we started. Like four apartments in the main building, and this was considered an apartment as well, but at any rate, we, at the time, twenty nineteen, we had discussed with the uh. With the uh building inspector, you know, what what we do with this this uh this cottage, what we wanted to do was demolish it. Push it back to the uh rear part of the property, rebuild it on basically the same um, basically the same size or maybe a little bit smaller. Problem was that this, that time, there was no ADU law, so that meant that if we, soon as we tore that building down. And we had discussions with the the building inspector at the time, I think it was uh Tom Priata, uh you know, we we would have, we would lose the. Grandfather non conformity of this being a a a separate CEO to have a legal bathroom and and kitchen in, so. In the end, about a lot of trying to figure out what to do with the property, we ended up just um, uh we were actually at one point, one point, we're doing a garage. We're doing a six hundred square foot building, that can have any plumbing in it, that doesn't make any sense, in the end, we just uh decided to do a hundred ninety square foot. Pool house, you know, two hundred square foot is course limit for a pool house, put it, push this far back on the property and call it a deck, that was back in twenty nineteen. Now flash forward five years, five years later, we have this great new ADU law, um. Which says you can do a um an ADU between two hundred eighty and six hundred square feet. Um the current owners uh who bought the property from the developers who I worked with originally. They never used the pool house as a pool house, um so it's a underutilized building, it's not really that convenient of a location from the from the pool. But they were reading about the new ADU law and they're actually kind of intrigued, um they're not here full time, they like the idea, most most of these. ADUs that I've been doing lately have been family members, in this case, they're actually intrigued by the idea of having a year round local couple. Uh on the property since they're not there all the time, and just the logical thing seemed, it did seem to be to just expand this existing pool house. Into uh just big enough to to become an ADU. Um the way it works in the site, in the site plan is there is a driveway uh that that comes down along the side of the house, that's actually the perfect spot where. You could park a car, you can get out and they create a little path along the perimeter of the property to get into the building. Um one thing I would add here too is that we're asking for twenty two percent um. Uh relief of building coverage, it's twenty nineteen before we started um. The brief development of the properties, building coverage is actually twenty seven point five uh percent, so. We're actually still well under what this um, what this uh um. What the building coverage was back in twenty nineteen, and that that large, larger building coverage was tri- triggered in part by this much larger um. Cottage and that was in the back there, that the longer it is, so that is a little bit of a complicated history. But to a fairly straightforward um block of virtually.
How many bedrooms are in the main house?
Let's see, all right, let me make sure I have this right. It's one on the first floor, we have one on the on the cellar, it's none on the first floor, the three on, and we um. There are three on the second floor and then it's one on the third floor, that's what we call the third floor. Remember that this.
So that's five.
This was a house of five.
Right, so that's five, five bedrooms, plus this would be six bedrooms.
Right.
Okay, right now, it looks like there's parking for two cars for the whole thing, it's a shared driveway and there's a little. Area that's kind of half stone and half grass, and there's enough room there for two cars.
Yeah.
So how would you get enough parking for six bedrooms?
So I think if I understand correctly, the ADU law is that you're not required to to provide the parking for that, and we do actually have. Current owners, and and no, they may not always be the owners, the current owners of the house do not have a car. Um and that's one of the reasons why they were attracted to this property, so they're gonna walk everywhere. And our thinking was that there is already this sort of preexisting spot here, which is sort of the perfect spot for somebody who is. Living in this ADU to to.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they escaped the parking question when they did the original renovation.
It was in part because there wasn't any parking there to begin with, so I think if I remember correctly, it was the whole sort of grandfather, right, and then they were.
Thought that when you do that extent of a renovation, you lose the grandfather, and maybe we should have at that time. Questioned the parking, especially when it's right on Main Street, which is probably the most difficult. Place in the whole village.
Have, you know, we do have the the gate there where you open up and that's where you would, that was uh counted as the 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 parking.
Well, I guess I'd ask, is there a way that you can provide more parking? You don't have to answer now, but the whole, the whole backyard between the house and the pool, um you know, it's a lovely. Wonderfully wonderful looking area. So, does anybody else think that parking is a?
Yeah, parking is a big problem, uh Liz, I was gonna ask you a question, um Tim brought up the question about fifty percent, it is. I I had always assumed that parking is only triggered by bedroom count, but it is also triggered by extent of renovation, like if you're renovating more than fifty percent. Of the building, then even if you're not changing the bedroom count, there's nothing in the code about that, is there? For parking.
I just thought you lost all grandfather.
There's a section in the accessory apartment.
Well.
Does address parking.
Okay, so that was a separate question, but just.
Yeah.
So does this require, does this little building require parking?
Any applicant shall be paid seat to provide at least one off street parking space for any such accessory apartment. But no off street parking spaces shall be required from accessory apartment. Um and then for the other one.
Doesn't require parking.
I I think it's based on bedroom, but I don't recall it being based on improvement.
Okay.
But I will look.
It so uh basically, all the parking on this property is all in the right of way, is that correct?
No, um there is actually.
To the survey it is, the survey shows this as being the right of way, and they're parking down here, right?
So they're parking here, but there's also this area here, which is is counts as our parking.
But it's, it's a patio.
I know they have it set up as patio now, because as I said, they don't have cars, but that was set up as an area where there's a gate here that's big enough. For a um for cars to drive through.
Really?
Maybe one car could drive in, but you.
It's a not that big a gate.
Turn around and park, that whole fence would have to come out and it would have to be open, if that were truly going to be parked.
So.
I just want to raise it as a question, you've got six bedrooms, that's one of the most difficult parts of the whole village to park in.
Well, and we already have.
Ignore it.
Yeah, and we already have a comment from the neighbor about difficulties in parking. So and that cars are very often in the right of way, when they shouldn't be in the right of way, so um. Parking, I think, is the problem here, because potentially whoever rents this is going to have a car or two cars. Especially if it's a couple, they may have two cars. Do anybody else?
That's my only comment, really.
I have a question for our council.
Yes.
Square footage for minimum square footage required for an ADU, is there something with regard to that or?
That's the other section.
So two hundred eighty square feet, I think.
Not the size, but the lot size, which would allow an ADU.
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Lot size, the lot containing accessory apartments, by the lot area requirement of the R twenty district, except the nonconforming lot. May be eligible for a separate.
That's the answer. Okay.
Maximum six hundred square.
Would this be affordable housing, by the way?
Occupancy shall be given to an affordable workforce housing income, occupants that find a village code chapter one fifty. Or a family member of the owner, shall be given to those persons who are otherwise already qualified, qualified and work in or for the village of Site Harbor. The village of Site Harbor ambulance or or police department or fire department. So yes, it has to either be um shall, it says shall, not may, so it's either affordable or.
They're aware of that, and.
And covenants would be filed against property compliance.
And then how big is, I I can't remember, maybe you said, how big is this, is the building?
It's, I think it's four hundred and something square feet, so it's sort of like right in the middle of what the range is.
Um Damon, do you have any comments?
I was trying to figure out, so so on the, uh listen, the west side, there's, there's parking, but it's not being used at the moment. Where it says the stone driveway.
That's on, that's on the other, another property.
Oh, when I look at the wrong one, oh, that's okay, got you, got you.
So they can't actually use that.
Okay.
I, that's my understanding, is other than the very end there, um the rest of that driveway is a just a right of way, so that's, that's.
Okay, I I missed it up on top, yeah, you're right.
Uh Ham, do you have anything else?
There's the one section at the end of the right of way that is, counts as the parking spot, yeah.
Yeah, there's two spots there. Right now.
Anything else? Is there any from, excuse me, anyone from the public that would like to speak to one fifty six Main Street? Yes, could you come forward, please? Great, thank you, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's uh Dean Moran Jaden, one fifty eight Main Street.
Great, can you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, interesting.
I work for Rocko La Carda. And let me just clarify some things that he said that were incorrect, number one, when it's on the survey, which you have here.
Right.
The entire length is a right of way.
Right.
That Rocko created in the seventies, he's owned the building since nineteen sixty four. They have been parking in that since the day after they received the CBO. When they received the CBO, they put the gates up, they put their fire pit in the middle of the thing. And they've been parking on the right of way ever since, we have complained numerous times to the town, to the police, to everybody. Now, when he says that they don't use the pool house, they rent it, you can go on her website and look, it's rented, and right now, it's rented. And there are two cars, so in your mess, if something happened, they wouldn't be able to get down there. That right of way is but ingress and egress, so when you go down, you were supposed to turn left. They had put up a gate now, it opens into the right of way, so the only way, even if they were using that. The only way they would back out, they would have to go and surround this property. So even now, the tenants go on his property willy nilly, and they have told, because the tenant told me. They have told them they have parking there.
And so those two spots there, that's kind of stone and grass, that's in the right of way, that's not on.
This is all right of way.
But the parking is down here.
Is that the survey?
Yeah, the existing parking is not shown on the survey.
Okay.
So this is the right of way.
So this is the right of way, right, originally, when he was saying that there was a a house there, they had parking. Uh Al Riggs had parking for all of his tenants back there, so they're supposed to come down here in this area. They called their parking area, and that's how they got the CBO, the day they got the CBO, it was. That was slapped up, and now they park here, the tenant is parking here, so it's very difficult for Rocko's people to even get in and out.
In this area.
Yeah.
Well, it's in this area, isn't that where they're parking?
No.
No, they're parking.
That's where they said, that was the legal parking.
So it's in here.
Yeah, they don't have any parking, they are.
So that's the right of way, yeah, okay. Those two spots.
A pool and a patio instead of parking. So I got an in.
Right.
To do what they've done to the town, to just, you know, as soon as you say something, you you made them get rid of. Four uh, they had four CFOs, you made them get rid of it to one, because they didn't have the parking. Said you had to have to, the day that you. Said you had to have to, the day that you said that, they went, they made, they made the, they took the fire pit out, they made two things, they put in two little minis. They have a big SUV that's there all the time. And, and I can show you a picture now because we have a camera and I have photos of everybody turning on our property. I have camera, I have a picture right now that will discredit what he just said. They're in there right now.
Well, I was just there before the meeting and there were cars parked in the right of way down at the end. Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, you know, so Rocko just wants to make sure that you know.
It's out in here. Yeah, here.
No, I mean, but the parking's right on the other side of that.
Think that's here, though.
Do you? Okay, I thought it was in here.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, is there anyone else from the public or on Zoom?
No.
No. Um, so I, I think that, you, you know, the board would be in favor of an accessory apartment there, but I think somehow the parking issue needs to be addressed because obviously it's a problem. So.
And not just for the accessory apartment.
Not just for the accessory apartment, but for the whole site. So I think until that's addressed, um, we'd want to adjourn this for you to come back to give us some, um, plan. Uh, anybody else have anything other concerns that they?
Not I. No.
Great. So do you have any more comments, Anthony, before we adjourn?
You know, I mean, the parking is, is tough there, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't disagree with some of the neighbors' issues and they do try to park in such a way that, that they're not blocking the, the neighbors' property. Um, you can just, the owners can see, you know, how they want to, there's some, some other great source, some ideas.
Yeah.
To address this, uh, the parking issue once and for all.
Yeah, because it's kind of like they're not parking on their own property.
Yeah.
And they, they should be parked.
Technically their own parking, I, I, I mean, their own property. It's just, it's a, it's a east and it's a right of way for.
Yeah, but that means that there shouldn't really be anything sitting there.
Yeah.
I mean, at the very end, maybe, but, um.
I mean, theoretically, you can just back out without going on to Rocko's property, but obviously, you know, at a practical level, people are just gonna pull in. I mean, people pulling in my driveway all the time, that turn around and history, it just happens.
Yeah. Uh.
Okay, that's all.
I'll just comment briefly. Your survey says overflow parking, yet there's a photograph of terrace and the back of the, the entire yard is consumed by outdoor furniture where it says overflow parking. So I, I don't see any parking on this property other than where it's indicated right in the rear of the house and.
Yeah, the overflow parking, you can't park in there.
Yes.
Could you go down and look at it?
Yeah.
You cannot park in there as well here. You can't make the turn. If you open the gate, you couldn't get, there's no parking in there.
Yeah, there's no place to park on the property.
I think unfortunately, that beautiful, big terrace and fire pit is wonderful looking between the house and the pool. To me, that needs to become parking, as ugly as that will be.
Or the, there's an area adjacent to the pool that maybe could take some parking. I mean, I think that's the thing that you have to be clever about, how you're gonna work parking into the site plan.
I did appreciate the history of the parking. Because I did not, uh.
But they didn't do what they were supposed to do when they initially did this renovation. This was supposed to be parking and so.
Right. Okay, so, uh, we will adjourn, but I have a motion to adjourn one fifty-six Main Street to the July sixteenth meeting.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next up is forty-eight Union Street.
Oh, poor Anthony. The ringer, man. We don't need to do this.
Give them a bunch of.
These two. Board is actually already approved this, but we just made some changes.
I could swear this was before us before, the parking lot of church. Maybe you weren't there.
Might have been during the period of time before. I can look it up if you want to know.
Okay, so this is, um.
Before we, we actually, Carrie, we, we opened the public meeting for one fifty-six Main Street. I'm getting a little, right?
I know.
We didn't open the public. Can I make a motion to open it and then we'll adjourn it? We adjourned it without opening it, sorry. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing for one fifty-six Main Street?
So move.
So second. I, okay, can we have a motion to adjourn one fifty-six Main Street for July sixteenth meeting?
So move.
Second.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, sorry. Great, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for forty-eight Union Street?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, I just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Anthony Roman, lot sixty-eight Union Street.
Great, uh, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, this is forty-eight Union Street. We, um, received zoning, uh, board of appeals as well for this project about a year, year and a half ago.
No, that's probably.
We also received architectural review board. Since we've got our, got our initial reviews and sort of doing a little bit more structural investigation of the house, um, we kind of decided you gotta change your plans around a little bit. So the, the existing house has this, um, this rear, rear, rear wing, um, which runs right along the, um, West property line. Um, and our original intent was just to kind of build on top of that. Um, and that triggered a, a minor, you know, triggered a, a, a pyramid, um, pyramid relief setback relief for that, um, that second story. What we found is that basically, um, first of all, that, that whole rear addition, i- it's, 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 it sits on basically on dirt and cinderbox. There's no foundation underneath it. Um, secondly, we found that there, there was, must have been a fire or something back there, so the, even the superstructure is, um, is structurally compromised. There's really no, on a practical level, of no, no way to kind of salvage that, um, existing structure. No way to dig it, a proper foundation on, under, um, entreating it to the neighbors', um, property. So rethinking this part, this a lot, uh, thinking this a bit, we've decided that what we're gonna go ahead and do is just demolish the, the, uh, the entire rear wing of the house, rebuild new. What that actually allows us to do is to kind of shift the whole thing over, uh, from that west property line. So instead of it being, you know, right on the property line, uh, it will be, uh, it's, uh, eight point, uh, eight point six feet away. Uh, it does still need setback relief, it does still need pyramid relief. One other thing I would add is that there's actually a net reduction of, I think it was, uh, five hundred eighteen cubic feet of, uh, pyramid relief, um, because of just removing all that mass that was on the, uh, on the, uh, right on the property line originally. So in other words, the non-conforming that we have to ask, ask for because it's new, it's new construction is, um, two thousand nine hundred seventy-three cubic feet, but subtracting all of the existing, um, cubic, uh, non-conforming cubic, uh, cubic footage, it's actually minus five hundred eighteen cubic feet.
So what, what are you requesting that wasn't already granted in addition?
You know, I mean, I, I talked to Tina about this and I think it was really just that because we've changed the plans so radically from what we had originally getting approval for, we just thought it was safe, which has come back to both this board and the seat and the architectural review board. Just to let you know what we're doing so that there's no confusion.
The previous, um, approval was, was for really building a second story on the rear addition, correct? As it was, and dormers on both sides. Is that correct as I remember?
On the east side and a small dormer on the, uh, on the west side.
Right. So one of the mitigating circumstances for this is that the adjacent property is a parking lot. Basically for the church.
Yeah.
It's against, it's not.
Yeah.
There's no house there, there's a.
No, I was just trying to get, I wasn't on the board at the time.
Right.
I was just trying to get a, this was approved.
Right.
What is required now that's in addition to what was already approved? Is there anything? Or is it just, it made more sense to do it all over?
I think technically there is actually a little bit more cubic footage that, that we need to technically ask for because it's new structure.
Yeah.
Um, so I think the original approval was like twelve hundred or thirteen hundred cubic feet, but that wasn't taking away, you know, the existing.
Thirteen sixty-one.
So the net total is less, even though we're asking for more, um, more, more relief in this situation.
And the, I'm assuming the pyramid relief is less too, from the last one for this one?
Well, it's, it's, as, as I said, it's, it's technically more because it's new construction, but the.
Yeah.
Whereas the other one, the old was just addition on to existing, but you're removing. This is actually a very similar situation to the seventy, um, seventy Glover Street, which you probably remember, where we're demolishing a non-conforming wing of the house and that was actually, it ends up being a net reduction, uh, meaning you addition the old, shift it over.
So the total pyramid relief you're requesting for the new is?
One thousand nine hundred seventy-three cubic feet.
It's proposed, right? And the existing is three thousand nine hundred ninety?
Uh, proposed, yeah. Well, proposed non-conforming to be removed is, we're removing two thousand four hundred ninety-one cubic feet of non-conforming. We're keeping three thousand, uh, twenty-nine, it's fifty, it's like non-conforming and we're adding the one thousand nine hundred seventy-three cubic feet, which works out to that debt loss of five hundred eighteen cubic feet.
From, from what had been granted previously.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. And was the gross floor area granted originally too, or was that not required because it was an addition?
Um, I, you know, that was, um, it wa, I don't think it was granted at the last, uh, um, at the last.
What?
So you're allowed fifty percent and, and you're requesting another thirty percent now?
Actually, we, I think we have.
We have, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So, um, is the extent, the extension at the back, the length of it? I'm sorry, is longer? No, it's a pinch longer.
It's slightly longer, but narrower.
Narrower, right. So there's effectively not too much change. And as far as the architectural review board, this is, the rear wing is not a significant feature of the house.
We are going back, we are, they are due, just for the sake of reasons.
Any other comments from members of the board?
No, I might have made some requests to reduce some of the variances required, but given that a previous board already approved that, I, I myself would feel that I want to respect that. Um, and this is so close, what's already granted that I don't have any questions on?
Well, I would add that the proposed addition is a better than the pre-existing non-conforming, that you decreased cubic square footage in terms of this, uh, plane. The project is more compliance with the code.
Damon, do you have any comments or questions?
So thi- this has always been a two-family home? Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's always been in the, the homeowner, uh, intends to keep it as a two-family and spare father. Situation. Although I think it would probably fall by to the new ADU law, um, if it wasn't already, uh, grandfather does a two-family.
And it doesn't look like there's any parking issue of a long driveway that would be.
Right.
Driveway there, like, like there are, it's all Union Streets, like that.
Uh, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to forty-eight Union Street? Anyone on Zoom?
No.
No, no. Uh, any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Uh, well, I was part of the approval of the.
Right, right.
That's why I have such respect for that.
Right, so. Could I have, excuse me, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for forty-eight Union Street?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Um, could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for forty-eight Union Street?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Have a good night. Okay, next on the agenda is twenty-nine Harding Terrace. Great, could you state your name and address for the record? Oh, wait, well, you can, you can do it. You can go ahead. Great, could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for twenty-nine Harding Terrace?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Great, may proceed.
So, the justice of this project, you know, was really an attempt to.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing him.
Yeah, same here.
So that, there is a special, uh, clearly, uh, definitely, second story is just going accessible. Um, and to reconsider the existing bedroom and, uh, balcony area on the, uh, primary living area, uh, of the house. Um, into something that is pretty accessible. As a result, we're adding an elevator. Uh, there's something to the lower story with the other story, uh, that needs to figure into bedroom, bathroom and virtually. Um, we are asking for two variances, one of which was related to pyramid law, and the third one is related to setback. Um, the pyramid law, there's actually a mistake in the documents that we received. Uh, instead of thirteen hundred and thirty cubic feet, it ought to be four hundred fifty-three cubic feet. Uh, so it's actually a very minor infringement, uh, and you can actually see that in photographs that are, uh, facing you. So whatever is shown in yellow is the addition that being proposed and the section that is shown in red, which is in the school, that's the infringement of the German law. Um, and in terms of, uh, the setbacks, you know, also actually built fourteen point eight feet away from the western property line. Um, and given the additions, uh, we would like to align the walls, uh, on the second story on the back, uh, with the wall on the first level. Uh, we're asked to remove there as well for the three actions of the technical. And so I think we can see the letters to mark the records, uh, from the folk of the neighbors, the neighbors to the west, as well as the neighbors to the south, uh, who have shown their support for the project.
Great, so you're basically really filling in, correct?
Correct. So the, the footprint of the building remains the same, the first story remains exactly the same. Um, other than green building work associated with the elevator and then the second story is where we are uh, building in small pieces and adding powder. But the number of bedrooms stays the same.
And your total gross floor area is going to be?
It's still well below. It's still well below.
It's twenty-eight thirty-two, is that what?
Uh, it will be twenty-eight thirty-two, so actual square footage is staying at its own two hundred square feet.
So the existing house was, was in the wetlands, uh.
Correct, so yes.
Yes.
And then we've received, and this may be way off topic because it's not part of this, but we received. Um, information about a retaining wall? Is that going in on this topic? Was that for this property?
Yeah, we had a letter regarding, but, um. I, I gave it to Tim to go over because there was, if it's the retaining wall that was put up, they did have permission to put that up.
Okay.
On a prior building in fact, but I was just making, um, ten to.
And as long as it's three feet away, i- it was, is that retaining wall is the one that's sort of in pink on here on the survey? Is that?
Like if we're looking at the house on.
On the right hand side, yeah.
Has to be offset three feet.
Three feet, but it looks like it's almost fifteen feet or fourteen feet from the property line. And if, in that case, it doesn't have anything to do with us. It might be an environmental. Concern for the harbor committee.
It seemed like they were talking about raising the height of it, but that's.
Right, but this is the retaining, the only retaining wall that's there, correct? The, the pink thing?
That's fine.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
So that's not really an issue. So any other questions from board members?
Nothing from me.
No?
No.
Damon?
Uh, my, my only comment is, is kind of a, a weird one. Uh, you've got rebar in the retaining wall, make sure it's fiberglass rebar. You know, the, the, the Florida Department of Transportation and Army Corps of Engineers are only in, in wetlands areas, especially on seacoast. Are really only using fiberglass rebar these days. Otherwise it just falls apart in about ten years.
Makes sense, thank you.
Right, just, just a comment.
Great, thank you. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to twenty-nine Harding Terrace?
Well, she can invite.
No, is there any? So, uh, every, how are people feeling about this? Fine, every, everybody's sort of.
Yeah, they're very small, right, very small variances.
Great, could I?
As compared to the first time when we were.
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, yeah. Uh, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for twenty-nine Harding Terrace?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, um, could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for forty, I'm sorry, twenty-nine Harding Terrace?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you very much. Okay.
Long way.
So, last on the agenda is one fifty-two Division Street. Could I have a motion to open one fifty-two? One fifty-two Division Street?
I'll make a motion to open.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
I'll stick with one for Division Street.
Great. Are you an attorney?
Uh.
Oh, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. You may proceed.
Great, thanks for having me today. So, uh, I listened to the solo discussion, part number four, my agenda with regular press, that's the. That's my, um, breaking share tonight. Um, so I'm looking to get solar panels for, for my home. Uh, there's three group sections, uh, the solar panels will be on, so west-facing, completely invisible on the streets. And by the neighbors, and one of the south facing section of the, um, what I asked. The most important section, but it is now facing south, make it is critical for the. System having enough fast as people are installing. That is visible from, they are very particular spot, not broadly, not one very particular. Spot you found in the street on the green, obviously at the house, if you pan up here, make sure a photo of that is a bit, a bit fair. It's not by an angle that may just can see, it's not an angle that you can see from the front of the house. Um, I just want to be very clear, I care enormously about this public information, this environment. Uh, and I will secure moments that are in the environment, which is why I'm so passionate about solar. I really do believe that this village needs to get the balance right, this is the sole preservation and protecting environment, future of our planet. We don't do so, we're not even gonna have a, which will inherit from the future generations, this is really the important one. A lawyer at Tesla informed me that this village has the strictest code for solar of the neighborhood. In the entire United States of America. I don't, do not think that's something you can find out. I don't know why to draw the path like one thousand sixteen, I think the word is too extreme in my opinion. And I, what I'm asking for with the variance is just a little bit of flexibility. Right, and I do think we should look to change the code for the benefit of the village. I think there's significant support for amending this code to something a little bit more balanced. Well, there's the code as it's written is essentially almost saying, don't bother doing it in historic districts. And the process and everything now do it extremely arduous and difficult. I heard that most residents are not gonna do about, um, to even get to this point in front of you here today. So a little bit of history, whether I, what before, before, there is history with solar, by the way, to answer your questions, right? Um, two years ago, I was in front of this board, presented my initial solar plan, which was for Tesla roof. Sounds similar to what the other homeowner was presenting. Um, that was denied obviously because of this, this rule. Uh, you know, the reason I put that forward is because the solar, the Tesla solar tiles, I think, very aesthetically pleasing and do blend in. But anyway, I dropped it at the time, but frankly, I didn't have the energy to pursue that matter at that moment. I needed to get the rest of my renovation proof, uh, approved to improve my family's living situation. Fast forward two years, we're still working on the project, it seems like right now, we could have one, two Division Street, we'll see it. Uh, and the reason this became so critical, because I had gone down the park with other residents looking about how we could try and convince. That it always, um, there and whoever happens to find on the law to, to, to remain that code. Um, the reason it's become critical to me now, because I kind of postponed to the end, it's probably attacked again. But what I realized is so many people in my building, it's surprised me that my new roof, which is conventional roof. That's be ripped out again and put the supports for solar, I won't explain that to you previously, so I didn't realize that. So for me, it's now or never, because the roof costs a hundred thousand dollars, I can't rip it out, I must put it on, holding off, put it on with sections right at the moment. And, and that's why I'm looking for an accommodation in this, because I strongly believe this village will change the support, I think there's gonna be strong support for it. And I'm asking for a little bit of flexibility. To add to your point, uh, Mr. Floria about historical, um, sorry, uh, uh, the national guidelines around this federal government. It's on the National Park, so this website, about this little balance, we've passed solar into historic villages. As far as I can see, the research is saying, the federal government actually does encourage solar in historic districts. What they're trying to encourage is a fair balance, to make it subtle. Not saying you can't do it at all, but to do it at the back, at the side, in visible spots, sure. They don't ride the front where it's completely obvious, but it's not, they're not saying you can't do it at all, you can't, can't be seen from any angle. Other than that, like in space, right? And if you look at the examples on the National Park, the reports of how this which pays, they cost suitable. I think they call it minimally interest. I believe my proposal for one fifty-two Division Street is minimally intrusive. Cannot see anything from the front of the house, most people driving on one fourteen, most people walking down the street, not gonna see any solar at all. Only if people are paying very close attention to look at the particular roof section, which is at sort of twenty-five degree angle, mostly facing upwards. It's quite hard to spot from the street, you really have to be looking for a very particular spot, you'll be noticing. Most people that will be enjoying the offense, historic district around Divisal Street, one fourteen, that whole intersection by. You know, Solandra is there, but with the three doors down from that. Um, I don't think anyone's gonna notice, I could strongly believe in line with the federal government's guidelines. That it is a minimally intrusive policy. And, um, that's just a true, yeah, now, in terms of precedent, right? I don't know, this is probably a touchy subject, and I don't know why it was approved, but Nineteen Howard Street was approved, it's called Tesla's solar roof. Has it, I don't know how that happened.
It wasn't, but it wasn't actually approved by this board, it was a mistake.
Another, it's in a historic village, and when asked to remove it, it's still there, right? It's on Nineteen Howard Street. That exists, we have, you know, just a small example, we're solar panels attached to that post in historic districts, right? For speed sign, but I don't think there are any objections based to that, and obviously I'm in favor of that, but just the point being about how far do we take it? This, um, point about absolutely no solar visible from any angle anywhere, right? I also think this situation in terms of progress for this village, which I believe is the right progress for this village. Is now this people saying, let's not have electric cables in nineteen hundred, right? It's spoiled, and it does spoil the honest, I think it's true, my personal opinion, right, but we have electric cables everywhere, we didn't say it was not electricity in houses. I believe that my request, my ask to you is balance. There's a reduction from what I asked for two years ago, and I think it's the right precedent to be having this village. We should be encouraging the public to do exactly the same. And we should set an example as progressive, uh, historic village, uh, where we're getting the right balance.
Great, thanks. Just to be clear about the Howard Street project, that was approved by the ARB. And it was given a permit without actually coming before the ZBA, and it was a mistake. So it wasn't ever approved by the zoning board of appeals. Um, and I don't know if there are other, I don't know if we've ever approved any solar project.
We haven't yet, no.
We have not yet.
Also, those, those shingles on that house are no longer made.
Right.
By Tesla, because, uh, uh, another resident village came to us with a house on, um, Hampton Street.
Yes.
And we had a presentation from Tesla and the shingles have gotten much larger, um, they don't. Most people driving by that house.
I'm not asking to Tesla.
No, it's. I know, we're just, we're just going back over the history, that the board has never granted a variance for. For solar.
Nineteen Howard Street is still in existence.
But it wasn't.
Asked to remove the roof, so it's just important for record that.
Right, but I made the point about the Tesla shingles because, except for the one neighbor, the glare from those shingles is unbelievable, and he had to put up awnings. On his house, because you couldn't go into the rooms, believe it or not. Um, no one else on the street is even aware that those aren't asphalt shingles. I live across the street, actually, from that house. I mean, I know what they are, but no one else does. When you drive by, they look like, they don't look like wood shingles, but they look like asphalt shingles, because they're the small. Why Tesla decided to not to make those anymore, I don't know.
Uh, did you, is there a reason why you decided not to continue, do Tesla shingles on, like these, these sections that you're proposing?
Is. If, it was, to me, it's you do the whole roof or you don't do it, right, because you want the whole roof to look the same.
Mm-hmm.
And so that was my original ask two years ago, it was granted, so then we went with conventional roof tile, half of it had been on.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so my, that was what I originally wanted, but I, I. Mentioned, so, so we have conventional roof, with conventional solar panels that go on top. What I hadn't realized is the score actually required, the solar panels. Yeah, takes the roof and they have to do that before they put the tiles on, and then they can put the solar panels later, but the struc, the supports have to be built into the roof.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why it's critical for my project at this time. So they are normal solar panels, they're very typical, um, black ones. A lot of complaint, I know there's a lot of concerns about reflectance, and I understand, you know, the, the, uh, affected by that. Um, in case my neighbors, they, they, from the roof angles, they cannot be affected, I don't even see it, right? So, um, it's not something that's gonna bother any of my neighbors around. I think the only intention with the law is that one spot from the street where it can be seen at a particular angle and make sure that.
We do have a letter from, from one of, one of your neighbors.
So recent letters from neighbors, and I have, um, my, both my adjacent neighbors, which are the two most affected by the decision theory. Both of them have written letters of support, um, uh, to the, to government department, it's okay. Um, we've had, there's a support from other neighbors down the street, um, so I think there is a lot of support in the area. What I want to mention about the reflections issue is that conventional solar panels, and this might not apply to Tesla. I don't know, that Tesla will offer this particular price, but conventional solar panels, um. Are normally coated with an anti-reflective coating. And from the research I did, they have something like a two percent so reflective, because it's designed to absorb energy, not reflect it out. And that's substantially less than metal roofs, the real problematic for it, historic village for, um. Reflectance is more, much more metal roofs, I would argue, which are granted, um, and that they, uh, they have a much higher reflectance.
I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have brought up the, I shouldn't have brought up the Tesla roof, I'm sorry. That's, that reflectance is unique to them, it doesn't apply to normal solar thing, but I think our problem is still. Our code is so specific and so simply worded. That i- if we, just my vote, if we grant a variance, we might, might as well ignore that code from this point on.
There are only.
Should be a good idea, but we, we should change the code.
Right, there are only two, I noticed just two, like if you're standing on the street looking down your driveway, you catch a glimpse of it. And then if you go around the corner, Latham Street, and you're in the street, and you look behind the brick house, you can see a section of it there. Um, I wanted to ask Carrie and Liz, though, do you know, we created a solar committee a while ago, and I had to remove myself because of. Core, um, quorum problems. Are they still in existence? Because they were working on.
I haven't heard anything about it, but I will.
Al, uh, you know, Alex was, Matheson was on that committee along with Gene Kane, and I don't know if they've come to any, um.
I, I've not been on any formal, so I'd say, I know I have discussed with others about.
But, but there was a committee.
It's not, I will state that we recommend a lot of.
I don't know exactly, it doesn't, we don't have a trial.
Okay.
So there was that.
There's nothing.
The solar that he's putting.
Right, but the, is the solar committee still active? Okay, because the, we did create the solar committee to try to deal with this issue and to make recommendations to the trustees. To change the laws so that, um, or, or to do whatever they wanted to do to make either say no solar or yes solar. Or whatever the recommendations would be, so there, there was some action, I don't know, it, it sounds like it didn't really go anywhere. Unfortunately. So we're still where we are.
Check, I mean, I can look into it.
Yeah. It was, no, Gene King might know, because she was on that committee, but I don't.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
So.
You know, I, and I, I understand, but like, obviously there's a lot of laws, a lot of people come to us for variance. Right, and I ask for variances for various specific circumstances or whatever, it's a gray area, whatever. I, you know, I don't know what the thinking was behind the, that wording that's now, right? But my argument to you is to consider a variance, because it is, I'm not saying. Let's put solar up on the front of the house, it's visible, you know, beyond these spots, right? Uh, I'm trying to comply with what I think are the federal guidelines, what I think is the right. Uh, but I think the majority of you and most residents of the historic district. Um, and I think that's what should be considered, um.
I guess if we could figure a way to distinguish this project from other projects.
Is it not possible to limit it to the areas of the roof that are not visible at all?
The problem is that the size of the system will be much really small if we only do the west-facing sections of the roof. And basically, this, my solar advisor said it's not probably worth doing, it's a costly old system.
It gets to a point where it's not, yeah.
The south-facing section is really important, uh, because obviously it's where the bigger problem here will come from.
With regard to, um, the east end here, in two thousand and eight, building inspector. South, I'm gonna introduce what we call the HERS rating. And that is a uniform code across the country, it's a home energy rating system. So we have a standard for each municipality can choose, and we spoke about to strip this code. In terms of solar, East Hampton Town and South Hampton Town have the strictest code in the country in terms of energy. Now, what happens when you get to a certain size home, it'll trigger solar. Now, what happens when you get to a certain size home, it'll trigger solar or geothermal. So you have an option and the municipality can choose not to implement the solar. Geothermal is the alternative. And this is done nationwide, even in our country, uh, Washington DC, which is pushing all this green incentive. There are still historic districts governed by the national park. Where you cannot put solar on the house, the alternative is the geothermal. Um, with regard to this HERS rating, we look at things like cooling load, insulation, air infiltration and the HVAC system. The biggest burden on a house in terms of fuel consumption is the AC and the heating. So that is taken care of with the geothermal. And if you might consider that as an alternative.
I have considered it. I've considered every exotical system imaginable. I've had every container that there was a geothermal look at site. Unfortunately, it's not big enough. You can't even get, it's not big enough to put in the uh, piles. The setbacks don't allow for some of the equipment then, uh, where it has to sit. And for one of the options, which is a full vertical or buried deep into the ground, you cannot even get the truck onto the street that is required to do that. And so I exhausted every geothermal option, believe me, if I could have done it, I would have done it.
But your houses are the size that does not require any solar or geothermal. It passes code by virtue of just spray foam insulation.
Oh, first of all, I'm not doing spray foam insulation because it's toxic, so I don't care about. I have, you know, non-toxic materials in my house, it's brand materials, much as possible. Um, so we're doing rock or ins- insulation.
That's right, which is even better and non-toxic.
Um, so that's what we're doing, but the um, this is because it's not, this is because I wanna uh, go above and beyond really, in a high respect, right? I'm encountering obviously, there's a, it's a limitation.
Right. I think the, the consideration is that if this were an exception to the rule, your house would have to be on a lot where it's larger than a, a certain size. If this were to go through, there are a lot of homes that were within ten foot setback, fifteen foot setback. There are some houses right on the property line. And this could set a very harmful precedent in terms of more homes being subject to that, as we just pointed out on Howard Street, that the home had glare. Um, what would be the reason for someone else to come before this board and say, I want the same thing as was given to this.
I, I think glare is a bolt installation. I, I think that does affect neighbors' quality of life, that they have glare coming through their kitchen window from the house next door. That's frustrating and I understand that, and that should be carefully considered with the, you know, with any, uh, if anyone else followed my footsteps and came um, to, to request a variance, so. Um, doesn't buy my case, but I, I think that's something that has to be carefully considered. We also have the ARB, HP ARB, right? And to me, um, when you think of the historic preservation, and does this sufficiently blend in with historic preservation order to outrageous, does it cross the line, right? To me, that's where the HP ARB are there for that decision, right? To judge each case one by one, leave a decision that is sufficiently, you know, blend in or not, right? And make that judgment, look at the federal guidelines, discuss that, that judgment. I've already been to the HP ARB and they've already indicated they was, they're a family for all this, if you approve. Um, so it has to go back to, if you did prove it, after final approval, but I haven't been to very a lot of these projects. And I think that's important for subsequent reason, because I don't think I'm making a deal, I don't think it's a done deal, right? It's still gonna be until the laws change or clarify, so I think it'll clear it exactly where that line would be drawn. I believe other cases we have to come through, just as I have, and have exactly the same discussion. I don't think it's, you know, it's, it's a done, it's a done deal. And the factors that go into that clearly are actually room angles, uh, you know, and exactly how to live or where, where outside of those sections.
I, I guess just for us in terms of the code, it really comes down to are the views that one has from down the driveway and from Latham Street significant to um, warrant approving this, or are they significant?
Well, the property owner, one sixty-four division, wrote us a letter and
Right.
invited us to go and look at it from the viewpoint of his property, which I, I didn't get the letter in time to do that. The only way that I would vote for this is if we measured the square feet that's involved, that is visible from the streets and then determined that because that was not significant, if it turned out not to be significant in our view that we would write the decision and that would be the precedent, that anything at that or under, future applications would get a variance on anything over that. In theory, depending on the board that existed then, would not get it if we were gonna grant it. I would much prefer to try to speed this through the uh, the trustees and get the code changed. Just because it's so, it's such a simply worded code. But there's tremendous gray areas in a lot of the code and that's what really what we're here to interpret, but this thing is so darn clear.
Right, but speaking.
It feels like it's over our pay.
There, there's an importance when it comes to preservation, because back to the HERS rating. East Hampton Village, Sagaponic Village, North Higgin Village, local to the townships, both East Hampton and no HERS rating required. And the intent is to keep this off of the house to respect the, the historic integrity of the home. Because this application has the potential to change the entire character of the neighborhood. Because they'll be running rampant with requests for solar. And I think that's cause for concern. I mean, there are good points here in terms of the physicality. Let's say it's not a historic home, you have to look at the other factors. Does this impede on the neighbor's quality of life? And that's where I feel that there's give and take. But owning a historic home, with that comes the acknowledgement, responsibility that you've bought something, a piece of history and that fabric of the neighborhood has to remain intact.
Yeah, and we're spending a lot of money to preserve that history, kind of like, right?
Yeah. However. The, the panels themselves detract from that history and that's why other municipalities.
So do our handles, so does the, so do the cars.
We could find many examples.
I mean, the house was from eighteen forty-two, there was no power, there was no cars. Right, so at some point you have to argue, where, what is, do we live back in eighteen forty-two? We don't, right? So at what point do we draw the line about?
I don't think this is the board that argues that case.
No.
That's, our elected officials should argue that, not the zoning board.
Yeah.
Just, just my opinion, just one vote.
Well, that's, we're.
I have tremendous sympathy for this, but our vote is so clear.
As an architect, we, we want this, we promote it. However, there is a fine line here because it's a historic house. And I think the distinction is with this, that it passes the code, prescriptive code is what we go by in terms of the roof being R forty-nine or the walls being a certain thickness. This house is supporting me to an A plus score. Under the scale of the house, doesn't need the solar to boost the score. It doesn't need the geothermal because it's under a certain size. So it's working well. You have insulation that's modern and the thermal envelope on it is including the appliances and the heating system take it to a score where it, it's performing quite well. It is an energy efficient house.
Would be better for the village actually if the commercial buildings like that have flat roofs would be all encouraged to have solar because you don't see any of it. And you'd never know that it was there.
It's a lot more than to me, just the insulation and the, and energy, you know, potential within that house because you know, you're talking about dirty power grid, right? And, and you're improving that situation, you're also making resiliency in the village, by the way, if everyone had it, much more resiliency. We had a storm, we have power, we have more loose power, we have something to retain. Uh, you know, people should be doing that instead of these horrible gas generators, for example, uh, back up batch from solar, so there's a, that, that to me is the future. And I appreciate your point about that this should be just a problem, but the problem is, this discussion's been out there, I don't, I don't know how to move it forward. No one seems to know how to move it forward. You know, it's a rise of a quick discussion, but I think that never happens in this kind of, it could be five, ten years before we can get that on the agenda and someone actually changes the code again, so. Um, yeah, that's why I want to, I'd say extraordinary effort to try and put this forward because to me it's now or never. And I am acutely aware of historical reservation, but to me honestly, I think this is a sensible balance in keeping with federal guidelines.
Um, so uh, uh, we'll take a pause right now. Let's, let's open this up to see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak to one fifty-two divisions.
Or waving a hand.
Nobody?
No, well, there's, no, there's. Well, they're not raising their hand.
No, but nobody. And there's no one else here?
What's the name of the company of the solar that you're putting in or you would like to put in?
Uh, Green Logic is the global company and it's helping assist with that.
So why did you choose that? What, what were the determining factors that made this the Cadillac for you to put in? The solar, the solar system.
Sure manufacturer of the panel.
No, why did you choose that system?
He's asking, why do you want to do solar, basically?
No, that particular system.
That particular system, panels.
System is because I had already ruled out the test of solar roof. I went down that road and withdrew. And to me, this was conventional solar panels. I went to Green Logic and I said, what? Are the best conventional solar panels and what's the best system you can recommend? You can see my, my, the, my roof, uh, how would it best be played out? And they've come up with the best system, they think, I see. That is really, it's up to them, so I was telling them exactly.
So where are these solar systems placed now?
So.
They're on the, they're on this diagram.
This is the front of our house, right, in the street. So this is taking the one fourteen.
No, I'm asking where in the country or where in any other area? What's, what's the percentage of failure or not failure or?
Well, conventional panels have been used for years.
Yes.
Yeah, and are pretty much all over the place.
Yeah, I know that, that's right.
Yeah. Not in the village though. I don't know. Do we have any convention?
There are some in the village, but they, they, there's. There are solar panels in this one away from the street, right in the corner.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, that, that particular one's not completely invisible anywhere.
Yeah.
So I think the building inspector proved that, never went to.
Right.
All. Um, you know, my case is just this, it's just that section that and you see the one spot, you can see it from, you know, it's near the house, but you can't, you can't see it from this side, you can only see it. You know, it's a very sophisticated.
So what is the, Damon, do you have any comments?
I'll have a hard time with, you know, again, as, as uh, everyone has said, the, the law is, the code is very clear. So I have a very hard time with, you know, making any exceptions when the code is that clear. But I also agree that we need to, you know, you know, the trustee should, should make a change of the code. So we have some flexibility to grant some variances, but you know, I have uh, I'm in Chicago right now, so I have some solar panels and I have to look at them, which are ugly. On the, on the back of, on the back of, we live like on, on an alley, so the uh, garages are on an alley. So as I go out, there's garages that have solar panels and they're, they're pretty ugly and they're actually pretty glaring too. And they're the older, older panels. So I'm for solar, but we don't need to be able, we don't need to see them on historic buildings. But they need, the code needs to be changed so we can have some flexibility. Right now, we, we don't have any flexibility to, to grant anything. I, I don't think so.
Let me, let me just say something to that because I know the code is, is very clear and everything, it's not asking.
No, we're there.
To the actual um, application and decide if you want to vary it or not.
We can grant a variance for anything in the zoning code, so the, the, the law is written in a clear decisive way, but it doesn't mean we can't. I, I, I think that's what it comes down to is, is precedent setting is really the problem. Because unless we can distinguish this property, we're opening up um e- everything to um, the, the same question.
Right. What about that idea of measuring the square feet that's visible to the street in proportion to the total? And if it's small enough, set, as I described earlier,
Hmm.
grant a variance, but specifically for that. And it would set a precedent for anything at that or below, but not for anything over. Do you think that flies?
Um.
Or not?
I don't know. I think it's, it, it's too arbitrary. This is too black and white. This is very similar to someone asking for a third floor and then everyone else in the village can say, I can have a third floor as well. Because you've opened the door to a precedent that you can't.
Well, you said, you can have a third floor, but it has to be under two hundred square feet.
Right, but it's still a third floor.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to come up with uh, some kind of compromise, but I, I don't. I don't think this is the, this is the place to just throw that part of the code out.
So Val, historically, in the historical district, geophysics is the thermal.
Well, y- yes, but the prob, I've had clients do this.
Can, can you tell me the, the benefits of that?
Well, the problem is that most of the time it doesn't work, either economically or physically. Because you can't, as you say, can't get the equipment in to do it for.
So there has to be a reason why.
It does work. If, if, under the right conditions.
Right.
I would argue the same thing with solar.
We live in a quadrant of the northeast where it doesn't perform nearly as well as it does in the southwest. And so the need for this is not paramount unless your house is over a certain size.
Yes.
Most of the alternative systems are based on sort of larger product.
Right, when the town of Southampton introduced the HERS rating, it was geared towards homes which were greater than sixty-five hundred feet. And there were public hearings. Linda Cabot was the supervisor at the time. And Kyle Collins ran the Department of Line Management. And it was an open public forum to talk about this HERS rating, which would be used across town of Southampton and then became code in East Hampton Town. And again, although we have an applicant here seeking solar, we have the strictest code in the country, the stretch code within the town of Southampton and East Hampton. And solar is not required for a house of your scale. It, it's supposed that and other municipalities can downgrade the solar standard so that they don't mandate them on the roof of a house. Again, Sagaponic Village, no HERS rating. It, same thing, Shelter Island doesn't have one.
There's a big difference between mandating it and banning it.
Right, that's right. So we have an end here and with probably good reason, they're very small properties. It's not so much we're anti-energy, it's because of the scale of the property. And as a member just said here, he's looking out a window at something that's not aesthetically pleasing and protrudes its glare back in the house, so that's a serious consideration. Where do you, how do you judge that? Who becomes the arbiter of solar is good or bad?
The arbiter of the color I paint my house, right, the ARB.
That's right.
Right, and that, that's, that's ambiguous, right? That's, that's subjective, that's up to their judgment. I, I view this, this, this way you draw the line with, does this breed the character of the historic?
Yes, it does.
To be, I think that's an HBO ARB decision.
Well, our board also has to take into account character of the neighborhood. That's part of our, one of our five standards.
Yeah.
We have a number of standards that we have to judge um, applications by, and that's one of them is the character of the neighborhood and and what Val is saying is true, it's that Sag Harbor was really a village full of soft wooden shingled roofs. And if all of a sudden everybody started making the roofs hard glass solar panels, it's not the same historic district. And we can't compromise.
It's in a section.
Yes, but that may be even worse because then you got mixing and matching of things and at some point, if everybody puts solar on roofs on their house and you can see it from everywhere, we don't have a historic district anymore. Because we're, we're destroying the um, part of the character of. Because we're, we're destroying the, um, part of the character of the, the neighborhoods in the district. Um, so it's a, it's, you know, it's a difficult thing to weigh.
I mean, the only thing I'm counter to that is the federal government's guidelines do not say, don't do it.
No, they don't say, don't do it, but do it, yes. Right, and in places that you can't see. The problem with your project is that there are two area, and it's not tiny either, because when you're on Latham Street, you can see the whole broad width of the roof from Latham Street. I know when you look down the driveway, you just see sort of a glancing view of it, which not, might not really disturb anybody. But, um, on Latham Street, you do see the whole width of the roof and the extent of the, the panels on there, unfortunately. And I don't know how we, um, sort of get around that in terms of character.
Right, well, each case by case scenario, if, if that were the, if, let's say your house was on the outskirts of the, the village, facing a field with no houses surrounding, where it doesn't cause quality of life issue. I think that's a different circumstance that creates uniqueness. You're in a very condensed part of the village, houses on all four sides. And that in itself creates a quality of life issue.
Can, can you tell me what percentage in Sag Harbor have solar panels now? Do you know?
No, it would be very tiny.
It's a single digit.
I think some research was done at some point, about, and maybe thirty houses in all of Sag Harbor, and thirty outside of the historic district that had approval for solar. I think the historic district is.
It's because, at, at the moment, because we've never granted a variance for solar, but that, they're all hidden, so you can't see them.
Has been, you're talking about historical versus non-historical. Aren't you?
In the historic district.
You're talking about historical versus.
If you can't see it from the street, then it doesn't need a variance.
Yeah, I understand that.
Your question really would be how many exist in the historic district of Sag Harbor that you can see from the street?
Yes.
And the answer would be zero, except for the one house that has Tesla's, the old style Tesla shingles.
Yes.
Because to a layperson, can't be seen, they don't even realize that it's solar.
We've never given a variance for, right, visible solar panels in the village.
Is that privilege?
How should we, um?
Is that privilege? Is it, are you trying to tell me that's privilege?
No, no, in the village, we've never.
But you're talking about historical, that you can't see, is it?
There's at least three that we know of in the historic district.
Yeah. Y- you cannot, it, it's, you can go into the building department and get, pull a permit to put solar on your house in the historic district if you cannot see.
Yeah, I understand that.
The only way you can do it, if you can see them, is to come before us to get a, a variance, and we've never granted a variance. So there are no visible solar panels theoretically in the historic district of the village, except for the one case.
So the only reason you, you're, you're telling me is because you can't see it, that, in terms of, uh, putting solar in a historical.
On a flat roof, for example, if this application were a flat roof, it's not visible, to some extent, you would have to gauge whether a neighbor would be bothered by it.
Right, the glare or whatever.
That's right, yes. So it's not so much the, um, energy consideration as it is the physicality of it, what is it doing to?
The aesthetics.
Correct.
Yes, it's about, it's about the aesthetics, actually, for the character of the neighborhood, yeah. And actually, these two areas would, of the, of the proposal would comply, because you really can't see those areas. It's really this area, which you can see down the driveway and from Latham Street. And down the driveway, it's really only a glancing view.
Gosh, your question.
Um.
If, I understand it's, it's a difficult decision to see with favor. The thing I, I care about most is, well, I'm upset with you most of the time. You deny me today, and then in two or three years, it's, the coast changed, and then there's clarity, and then I could have done, right? And I won't at that time, because I can't bring up the roof. Do you think it's possible to consider allowing me to put in standings, which I don't really think are that visible, they're just little straps that pop up on, on the roof? Such that if it was, approval was granted later, with the focus changed, I could add the seven panels later, I won't have to rip off the roof?
I don't think there's any variance issue with putting, they would be like, um, lightning rods, or, um, I don't know, some other sort of little thing on the roof, I don't know if there's any code issue about that. But I also, there must be also a, a way to install panels on an existing roof.
You can.
You can.
You can. I think that doing that, suggesting that you would put the boots on the roof, for that is like letting the nose of the camel into the tent. Because then the rest is going to follow, or could, and although they.
That would be nice to solve out until the.
Till the code is changed.
No, yeah, wouldn't actually be totally.
Yeah.
The camel wouldn't be able to get anywhere, so.
I don't think we have anything to say about whether someone puts.
Denial from the board, denials from with the land, just like approvals. So you would not be able to come back out.
I'm not advocating for that denial.
You would not be able to.
I'm absolutely.
No.
No, no, if you got a denial, you would rather withdraw it without the denial on your record, that's what's saying. Then if you go with the land, so your board changes their mind, and they're granting these variances, you would not be able to come back and seek the same relief as the first checkup, right?
The only, the issue you might run into is with the ARB, because they might not like these stands on the roof.
They already.
No, 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 I mean, but without the solar.
They don't obstruct, yeah.
Yeah, but the studs, without the.
They're not that big.
No, they're.
Yeah, it's just a little thing that keeps sitting in place above the rooftop, so they're not, monsters up here, just a little thing.
Um, so. Do we want to, do, I, I guess we should, maybe for your benefit, do sort of a straw poll of see, seeing how we feeling about this before you decide what you want to do, either withdraw, or we can adjourn. I mean, you, you have options, we can close it and vote. We can do a straw poll, and then you could decide whether you want to withdraw, or we can adjourn, to give us more time to come, more time to contemplate.
All the time to think about it.
We can do both, we're pretty flexible on what we can do here. So I don't know, Ham, how are you sort of feeling? I know it's a difficult decision, or you can say you're on the fence.
That, I personally, it's almost like the same, that has nothing to do with that. We had two homes, one on Madison and one on Lighthouse Lane, about putting up a fence.
Right.
And all of a sudden, it disappeared. They, they were privileged, and then they came something about historical versus standard.
They changed the code.
And changed the code.
Right.
This is where I object. I feel that he's not privileged based on his house.
Uh, as I kind of indicated, I'm reluctant to set the precedent and change the code. As an act of the, of the unelected zoning board, I'd prefer to have the code changed.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I, I agree then, because just like you did that.
Attaching the brackets now, I don't think that would even come before us.
Right.
You might just, you might make a part of a building permit to the building department, but that wouldn't come before us.
I don't know, Damon, how are you feeling?
I don't want to set a precedent, because not only do you set a precedent, and somebody goes and they, they, they exceed what they should have done, and then we have the same issues we have with a lot of other
Everything we, everything we do in here, we set a precedence.
Yeah, so I'd rather, I'd rather.
Well, not some, often not a new precedent.
I guess for me, it's the context of precedents that have already been established.
Establish.
Yeah, I guess for me, it's the same sort of issue, I, I think it's, it's difficult, because we would be setting a precedent, and if there was some way to distinguish this. And I know you, you want to do it because you want to be good to the, um, you know, the climate and the ecology, and, and it's a good thing to do.
It's true, just to be clear, I, I, I.
Yeah.
There's power outs, it's all.
Yeah, right, I mean, there's a practical reasons, too. So I don't know, I guess, and how you're feeling, Val.
The Secretary of Interior Standard was introduced in, I think, two thousand fourteen, it, it was an amendment to their nationwide recommendations for ARB, as you pointed out, color of the house under ARB purview. And as technology advanced, this became a legitimate concern across the country. So, um, I would say if there were uniqueness to your application, but there's none, because this could be repeated in a sector of the community where there are houses very close together, and this is the law. It, it stands firm. And although I sympathize with your want to be more green, um, this protects the character of the historic nature of the village.
So, we can adjourn this, uh, you can withdraw it. We can.
Let's adjourn.
Let's adjourn, and think about it, okay, quick, so, could I, yes. And if you can think of a way to distinguish your project from every other house, that would be ideal. So, I know that's a tall.
Reach out to, um, the neighbor opposing.
Yes, that's a good idea, too.
One fifty-two, it's the house on the corner.
Um, I believe it's the house on the, the corner of Latham, on the opposite side.
Oh, that's one.
So, could I have a motion to adjourn one fifty-two Division Street to the July sixteenth meeting?
I mean, the address of that house we were describing is one sixty-four, one sixty-four Division, at the corner of Latham and Division.
Uh, all in favor?
I.
Good motion.
I did, and I seconded.
Val seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, great, thank you very much, thank you for your patience. Okay, on to decisions, we have three, I think. I don't know which one you're doing, but whatever it is, it's fine.
One twenty-sixth base street, first decision. This is an application to construct a second story addition to the existing single family residence. It's located in the R twenty zoning district, the property is comprised of twelve thousand eight hundred, two hundred eighty-one square feet, uh, where twenty thousand square feet required, the property is sixty-five feet wide, or like hundred feet required. The property can construct additions to the pre-existing non-conforming home and seeking variances to allow a proposed second story addition of a proven to the sky plane, or a total of one thousand two hundred seventy-eight cubic feet or zero permitted. Um, a proposed expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming structure of one thousand and forty-four square feet to expand to a proposed GFA of two thousand eight hundred forty-seven square feet beyond fifty percent rule. And for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board finds their each part justice hereby then to various.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for one twenty-sixth base street as written? Some second?
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next application for decision is Who, Hampton's LLC at forty-nine Hamilton Avenue. This was an application to, to allow an as-built retaining wall to remain constructed, zero point three feet from the side yard, um, where three feet is required, there's a variance of two point seven feet is required. Uh, this, this retaining wall was built to maintain the fill that was necessary to bring on the property, bring to the property to construct a pool, made of CCA wood, it was constructed against a cruise fest, trying to resist visible to the neighbor. Um, and for the reasons set forth in the each on the board nearby, the eight, I'm sorry, testing grants of various.
Great, could I have a motion to approve the decision for forty-nine Hamilton Street as written?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Val?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the final application for decision this evening is for Jeff Sharon at five Washington Avenue, this was on the Republican hearing tonight. Um, this application, uh, was before the board, and by decision date of October seventeen, twenty twenty-three, this board granted setback relief to allow the applicant to construct a new two-story single-family residence. They returned to seeking, uh, to construct a garage and a pool with pool equipment. Um, this is a corner lot, it's located on Lighthouse Lane in Washington Avenue, and it's nine thousand seven hundred fifty square feet and sixty-five feet wide, where twenty thousand square feet is required, and one hundred feet is required. Um, they sought variances for a front yard setback, the pool on the north side, to be twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet required. Proposed front yard setback, there'd be a garage on the north side to be twenty point nine feet, where thirty-five feet is required to allow the garage, the pool, and the pool equipment to be in the front yard of Washington Avenue for a shelter research of the prohibited, and finally to allow the proposed equipment, which is located inside the garage, to be twelve point nine feet from the property line, where fifteen feet is required. And for the reasons set forth in the written determinations, board give by determination, so it needs to five part testing grants for variances.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for five Washington Avenue as written?
Some second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing for the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in the Village of Sag Harbor?
I'll make that motion.
Sag.
I should be updated to see.
Oh, no. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank you, Damon.
Have a good evening.
All right.
Have a good night.
Damon.
Yes.
I don't have it.
That was an impact.